All right. Hello. Good evening. Welcome to this regular meeting of the West Orange Word of Education, June 22, 2020. We already took care of the preliminaries, so let's move on to item five, consideration of the closed and public meeting minutes of May 27 and June 1. Have a motion.
I'll motion.
And seconded.
Second.
All right, Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Wachstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Triggs Gales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right. Student liaison report. Ms. Bolas.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jerline Bolas, and I'm going to be giving you the student report. So this year has come to a close, and I'd like to begin by congratulating all of our West Orange students in the most unprecedented circumstances, in the most inconvenient circumstances, still pulled through, and we did it. I also want to give a special congratulations to all of our graduates from elementary to middle to high school. This was a crazy year, but it's still a transition that we're going to cherish for the rest of our lives, and we're going to use to better ourselves in our future academic endeavors. Tomorrow is the West Orange High School Class of 2020 Virtual Graduation, and so I encourage everyone to tune in at 7:00 PM sharp. In addition, we also have some celebrations. We celebrated our fifth graders at Hayes Elementary Schools, where they received their diplomas at an outdoor ceremony, and other schools. Our middle schools also had their virtual ceremonies last week, so I encourage everyone to really stay tuned. You don't have to have a child to really pay attention to celebrate the achievements of our graduates. I'd also like to express my personal gratitude. I think I speak for the class of 2020 when we say that we're very grateful for all the efforts done by our district, our schools, and individuals to make this year as memorable as possible. We had the Adopt a Student Facebook Fan Page, which adopted many of our seniors and helped soften some of the financial burdens by giving gifts to the senior class. I know that was organized by a lot of individuals within our community, and we have many individual teachers. For me, Ms. Connors, she gave me a generous gift as well, so I really want to thank everyone who took the time to make this year memorable for our students. And I'd also like to also acknowledge the work that we're doing to promote race relations and racial equity within our community. Last week, we had the Diversity Equity and Access Panel. We had the protest at the West Orange Town Hall Building, the celebration of Juneteenth, and I'd really like to give a shout out to the West Orange Youth Caucus, who has really taken this opportunity to mobilize the voices of our youth. And the last thing I want to say is that I encourage all eligible and registered voters to execute your right and your responsibility to vote in the New Jersey primary election. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all you've done this year. You've been a fantastic student liaison to the board. I think I speak for everyone on that, and you know, it's been a great term. We really wish you all the best. We know you're going to do great. Thank you. All right, superintendent report. Dr. Cascone.
So good evening, everyone, members of the board. Ms. Bolas, I'm sure that the board members will be speaking a little bit later during their reports, you know, thanking you and wishing you well for the future, but take this time to also express my appreciation for your service to the board and as well as participating in our equity panel. Last week, I can tell you that I received a lot of just very positive feedback of folks who were extremely impressed with the entire panel, but as well by you as a student and a young social justice advocate. So we appreciate that. Thank you for taking the time to do that. So as Ms. Bolas, you know, kind of set the table there, the 1920 school year, for all practical purposes, came to an end on Friday. Of course, we do have the virtual graduation of the high school tomorrow, along with a drive-by through the school at 4:30, and we are offering our modified onsite ceremony on July 8 in several different sessions. So I'm kind of marking that date of July 8 as sort of the official end, but for all practical purposes, we are done. Our classes have been completed. Last week was an amazing week of celebration. I had the opportunity to attend all of the fifth grade drive-by ceremonies, and it was really terrific to see the smiles on the faces of the students and the parents. I was left with the feeling that we had, through the hard work of the staff and the administrators in those buildings, managed to kind of create a special moment for the students, and so that was very heartening to see that, to bring closure to that experience for our fifth graders as they move on to Edison School. We wish them the best of luck. Similarly, with our middle schools, similar types of virtual ceremonies, and of course, we do wish our eighth graders the best of luck as they move up to their freshman year. We, of course, there's been, after a Father's Day weekend, we are already back at it with a lot of planning. That's forthcoming. Our virtual summer schools will be starting up the end of this month, and so we're readying ourselves for that. You know, as much as we would have liked to have offer onsite summer school for those programs, I think when one looks at the uncertainty that still surrounds the opening for September and the many, many questions that exist for September, it simply would not have been feasible or responsible for us to put students and staff members in the building at this time with so little guidance. Had we had a little bit more turnaround time, we could have done that. That being said, we have made some adjustments in the way we're running those programs, more specifically, daily synchronous interaction with teachers for instruction through the virtual platform. And of course, any gaps that we've seen have arisen over the course of the year, whether it's with the closures rather, with our special needs students or others, we're obviously committed to offering whatever services and support that they need during the year in order to get those students back up to speed wherever they may be. I should speak a little bit about athletics. We have received guidelines from the state indicating that we are able to begin Phase One of athletics over the summer. It's worth mentioning, because some folks will say, well, geez, you know, we can't do onsite summer school. We do athletics, and I think the biggest difference, there's two, there's two different, three differences, really. One is that athletics are outside. Two is that, different from the opening of schools, we've received very specific guidelines for what each of these opening phases will look like relative to social distancing and keeping athletes separate. I will tell you that we, as having just received these guidelines, I'm meeting the end of this week with staff, with administrators internally to kind of go through those, and we are trying to make sense of exactly what they involve and how we can do that. Though at the moment, we are scheduled to commence that Phase One on July 13, but will delay it if we need to, if we do not feel that we are prepared to comply with the regulations and the health guidelines for that. And finally, and perhaps most importantly, is for September. I've participated in a couple of focus groups last week with staff members. We are in the process of finalizing our student and family surveys to go out, and we are expecting that this week, or at least by the end of June, we will have specific guidelines from the state of New Jersey as to what school needs to look like in September. We have a little bit of a window into what that might look like from what we've seen come down the pike with the recent governor's order relative to higher education, and it would point to the fact that social distancing within classrooms will be necessary. The exact feet has not been told us, but if we go on what's been said in the past, that would be six feet. And so what that would mean is if that is in fact the case, that is in fact borne out in the governor's order relative to pre-K through 12 institutions, what that will mean is that we will not be able to place all of our students in the building on a given day, and it would mean we would move forward with a hybrid schedule. Meeting with my senior cabinet tomorrow, a think tank of administrators on Friday, and then we will roll out our planning structures for the month of July as we very quickly set the rough framework for what the hybrid school day will look like, and then begin our preparation in terms of scheduling, transportation routes, food services, and of course, communicating with parents in as timely a fashion as possible in order that parents can make arrangements as necessary for the days that their child may not be in school, but may be learning virtually at home. So that's where we are with planning, you know, for the upcoming. I will kind of transition rather ruggedly here to a recognition of student and community groups. For those of you who are aware, we have typically in the past done what we call a parade of honors in the last meeting of the year. For obvious reasons, we were not able to do that meeting virtually, but I did not want to miss the opportunity to call attention to a number of both students, staff members, and community members who, I believe, distinguished themselves over the course of the school year and during the closures. And so just going to enter into those at this time. We also have the presentation of a board award, which we'll get to shortly. So first and foremost, I would like to send a heartfelt congratulations to obviously the entire class of 2020, and in particular, the valedictorian for the class of 2020, Annika Fernandez, and the salutatorian, Brett Zelikson. You have distinguished yourselves as tops in your class, tops of a class of many outstanding scholars, and so we congratulate you and look forward to recognizing you in the upcoming events and wish you the best of luck and look forward to having you return and hear about all the great things you're doing in your future endeavors. One of the components of an onsite graduation ceremony, the typical onsite graduation ceremony is the recognition of the junior honor guard. The junior honor guard are the students who are in the tops of their class. They're typically an honor guard at the onsite ceremony or recognized. Unfortunately, they will not have that opportunity, though we will recognize them through a variety of means. Our onsite ceremonies on July 8 are going to be shortened due to the fact that we will be in July and on that turf field. But I wanted to read our junior honor guard by name at this time and give them, albeit a brief moment in the sun here at one of our board meetings. So our junior honor guard, which I will read now, starting with Ebou Jettusomi Adesola Alagabite, Ryan Obina Adubassim, Miguel Manuel Almonte, Neka Christina Arizene Arinze, Masara Sabira Assad, Grace Anne Atia, Ashley Kimberly Azana, Chrisanel Josejul, Michelle Victoria Becerra, Tate Michael Bennett, Victoria Rose Brazos, Jimani Kiyoshi Buford, Parisa Renee Burton, Caitlin Erica Carlos, Valentin Andre Chindea, Amaya Floret Clement, Isabel Sarah Cohen, Jasmine Tori Cooper, Sinaidani Matthew Michael D. Franceschi, Sebastian DiSimone, Madison Clark Despen Polard, Rian Clarence De Vera, Shannon Nicole Ulaodineo, Andrew Thomas Gart, Owen Robert Hagstrom, Carlos Manuel Erbozo Osko, Connor Patrick Kinfe, Alexandra Jacqueline Hugue Juapaya, Eric Chukuka Uwala, Nuja Azhara Klausar, Madeline Carol Keith, Jacob Aaron Klausner, Casey Allison Kuga, Tracy Quoc, John Michael Lupkovic, Raquel Lourdes Menefee, Samuel Anders Miller, Yara Mohammed Mohammed, Christopher Daniel Mongeli, Scott Wesley Mole, Celia Maris Murphy Brownstein, Rose Anya Murphy Brownstein, Mariana Myrtle, Delshawn Chimma Nuafur, Bellin Aurora Osborne, Alexis Isabella Palmeri, Olivia Ray Petrucci, Mercedes Andrea Polo Robles, Megan Patricia Riley, or Patricia Riley, sorry, Emma Rose Renwick, Dylan Julian Rotino, Stephanie Lisette Reyes Morales, Michael Joseph Rojas, Shemaya Santi, Darlene Lucina Sanchez Elizarraras, Kaia Drew Schultz, Andy Paige Schwartz, Lily Myisraelis Stevens, Lily Mae Israelis Stevens, Carla Suzie St. Flor, Emma Josephine Svetvimas, Martha Carolina Tamai Zizin, Jeric Omar Tigre Dominguez, Rebecca Chaya Redder, Nathaniel Rakpan Benoya, and Grace Danner Wensel. And so we offer a virtual round of applause to the future class of 2021 for their outstanding services, their outstanding performance and achievement. We know you will continue to excel in your senior year. And now we present an annual board award, and this is the Dylan Pennell Mountaineer Trailblazer Award. It's a Board of Education award created to honor Dylan in 2008 for his work in establishing the Air Force Junior ROTC program in West Orange, and given thereafter to a student or students whose ideas and actions result in a lasting contribution to the West Orange School District and whose contributions enhance one or more of the following: culture of our district, student life, school environment, curricula and instruction, training, career development, civic or community involvement, and educational activities or programs. So at this time, I will turn it over to Board President Alper to present the award to this year's recipient.
Thank you, Dr. Cascone. This year, the board is proud to give the Trailblazer Award to 2020 graduate Sandy Guerrero. Sandy is the most distinguished individual wrestler in our 58-year-old program. She was one of three captains of both the boys' and girls' wrestling programs, the first-place winner of the 2020 NJSIAA Girls' Individual State Wrestling Tournament, the first state wrestling champion in school history, and this year's Girls' North Region Champion. Her 2020 record was 22-0 with 21 pins. In 2019, Sandy placed fourth in the state tournament, second in the Girls' North Region, and had a record of 18-3. Combined, she is 40-3 and has taken first place in 10 separate individual tournaments. Just amazing. Sandy is also a four-year member of the Air Force Junior ROTC program, where she has also served with distinction. Only about 25% of cadets complete a full four years in the program. Her class is the first and only West Orange class to have earned the USAF Distinguished Unit Award for all four years. This award recognizes the best Air Force Junior ROTC units in the world. In 2018, she was awarded the Celebrate Freedom Award, a nationally sponsored award given annually to just one cadet in each unit. She was chosen ahead of her peers for outstanding initiative, judgment, and self-confidence. Last year, she was awarded the Enlisted Association Award. This is also a nationally sponsored award given annually to one cadet at each unit to the most outstanding cadet serving in an enlisted rank. On behalf of the board, I'm proud to give this year's Dylan Pennell Mountaineer Trailblazer Award to Sandy Guerrero. Congratulations. And now Suzanne Pennell would like to say a few words on behalf of her son, Dylan.
Suzanne, we just need to unmute yourself on the bottom left there. There I am. Thank you very much. Thank you. I'm reading this on behalf of my son. Good evening, Superintendent Cascone, Board of Education members, parents, and students. I wanted to congratulate Sandra Guerrero for being awarded the Dylan Pennell Trailblazer Award. I cannot think of anyone else in the class of 2020 more deserving of being called a trailblazer and upholding the standards established by the Board of Education when honoring me by establishing this award two years ago. Having a dream and then pursuing it, working towards it, and fighting to attain it are definitely exemplified by Sandra. She is tireless, determined, exemplary, and inspiring. I am so proud of Sandra, and I know she will carry on her excellence at New Jersey City University and beyond. I wish I could be there in person to present this award and congratulate such a superstar, but between current health restrictions and the fact I'm now stationed in Charleston, South Carolina for nuclear power school, this note will hopefully convey my big pride in this year's Trailblazer Award winner. On behalf of my parents and myself, we wish to congratulate and applaud Sandra Guerrero and wish her fair wins and following seas. We thank the Board of Education for their selection and for their constant support of the Mountaineer Squadron, all our West Orange Public School students, and definitely me. Best wishes again, Sandra, and as a former fellow West Orange High School wrestler, I just want to conclude by reminding you always, family never graduates. Sincerely, Dylan Pennell, Lieutenant, Junior Grade, United States Navy.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Pennell.
Thank you.
And congratulations to Dylan on nuke school. That's fantastic.
Yes, thank you.
Good to have you back in the meeting. All right, Dr. Cascone.
Yeah, I would just like to echo congratulations to Sandra and her family. I've had the opportunity to meet both her parents and obviously Sandra as well, and I couldn't be happier for them and congratulate you on this outstanding award and of course, your achievements over the course of the year. We will miss you here in West Orange High School, but look forward to everything you'll accomplish and look forward to welcoming you back at some point, because we know you'll come back. Okay, moving along, I would like to recognize our Director of Guidance and Student Personnel Services, Cheryl Butler, who in addition to being a tremendous force throughout these closures, she has been so supportive of her staff and also of our students and of myself as the superintendent when I've needed and had to call upon her for certain things. But this award in particular, just like to call attention to awards she received earlier, I think it was believed last month, the 2020 High School Scholarship Award nominee by the New Jersey School Counselor Association, which recognizes outstanding service, and we commend Ms. Butler for her dedication and service to students, parents, educators, and the community, and for promoting by your example the highest ideals of the school counseling profession, and that is how the certificate read. And so, Ms. Butler, we congratulate you on this recognition, and thank you for your service to our students. As we've gone virtual, it was a huge paradigm shift for us, and we were able to do this virtually seamlessly, and that was due in large part to the assistance of Ms. Graupthiesa, who of course is on this call and continues to facilitate this meeting for us. She has been absolutely outstanding and doing this all the while while assisting with all the many, many video productions that have been produced, including the virtual graduation, including all of the middle school graduations filming speeches, editing videos, has just been working so hard over the break, and just like to publicly thank her on behalf of the board for all of her fine work over the course of the closures. So just a round of applause from Ms. Graupthiesa. She keeps us laughing too, great sense of humor. And of course, our social media coordinator, you know, who works with us, and that's Perry Bashkov. I mean, the amount of content that we've been pushing out on social media has been voluminous from all different ways. And I know that, you know, Mr. Bashkov has been working around the clock to help us kind of get information out, getting our messaging out. He's been a tremendous support for me and to the administrative team and to the teachers. So, Mr. Bashkov, we thank you for all your time and efforts in general, but in particular, in helping us during the closures. So we thank you. Obviously, our technology services was a big piece of, you know, closing that digital divide over the, you know, over the course of the early weeks, and then over the course of the closures, ensuring that we were able to assist students with Chromebooks that were malfunctioning or parts that needed to be replaced, chargers and the like. And so I'd like to publicly thank members of the Technology Department, Cynthia Escavell, Angie Nevins, Marek Boczewski, Lester Nipla, and the Director Phil Santiago, who have, you know, throughout the closures and more recently been onsite. You know, Cynthia was a huge help early on onsite in the technology hub, getting Chromebooks out. And so I just want to thank the Technology Department for that. Early on in the height of this pandemic, when we weren't able to necessarily have our own staff in, I'd like to just publicly recognize contractors who we worked with from CDC who were there in the very beginning, and in some cases throughout the closures, staffing that technology hub and being available to parents for Chromebook pickups. Richard S. De Cloud Upalone, Barry Watkins, Shereen Taylor, and Walter Flynn. I would like to thank them for their service at a time when we really needed hands on the deck, and they were here for us. The next slide is really, it's what I call the, you know, standing in the gap. You know, there were a number of staff members who, whether it was at the beginning of the closures, being onsite at the schools to ensure that we were distributing our Chromebooks, whether it was throughout the beginning of the closures, when I put together what I called my Delta Team, which was made up of a group of largely clerical aides who came together and really put out thousands, literally thousands, of phone calls to individual houses to follow up with families who had not filled out our technology survey. They put in hours over that week and over the course of those first few days to identify exactly who needed technology and mobile Wi-Fi hotspots. And, you know, I am really indebted to them for the work that they put in early on. And we've had staff members who, throughout the closures, and they are Gloria Daniels, Yolanda Ward, Teddy Wallers, Dave Zawacki, Flammer Alu, Brian Green, Lonnie Williams, and Elizabeth Hughes, and Wanda Fag, who have been with us all along. You know, Gloria Daniels and Yolanda Ward were pretty much the main folks up here at the Board of Education, making sure that the food pantry was stocked, making sure that it was organized, putting together bags, in some cases, delivering bags. Teddy Wallers and Dave Zawacki, who work in our residency office, did many, many home wellness checks for families who we hadn't gotten in touch with, delivered many Chromebooks directly to people's homes, delivered food directly to people's homes. And so I can't thank them enough. And, you know, Lonnie Williams, Flammer Alu, and Brian Green have been security staff that had been onsite, Wanda onsite throughout the closures and assisting us, you know, in particular Lonnie Williams, who kind of coordinates our security. He's been a great help to me in making sure that our buildings were secure and staffed. And, you know, finally, I have to give a, you know, a special shout out to my administrative assistant, Elizabeth Hughes, who has been here throughout the closures with me, working and has been, as she always is, a tremendous help. So the Standing in the Gap Award goes to all these folks with whom I could not have, and we could not have done what we did, and so I offer them my gratitude, my heartfelt thanks for their service to our district. Of course, we couldn't get the food to our buildings. We've had our Transportation Department, which has continued to be an essential service that's operated again throughout the closures, nonstop from day one, delivering food every day to buildings, delivering, sometimes doing wellness checks, sometimes doing Chromebook delivery. And so I'd like to recognize our drivers, Musakaba, Antoine Hinton, Cecilia Pagan, Pamela Parker, Jacquet Jean-Pierre, Utica Headley, Isabel Olivier, Ernst Jean-Louis, Maria Luna, Charlotteine Demanche, Noelle Deverge, Leomonda De Silva, Yoslin Torres, Nubia Garnica, Norma Torres, Steve Smith, Naomi McKenzie, Zlandy Charles, Jerry Motogracia, and then of course, not here on the slide, but I need to call attention to our directors, our Director Elena McFarlane and our Assistant Director, Chris Caragarto. So we thank our transportation for everything they did. You are appreciated, and we offer you our gratitude. And our food services. We have put together just a Herculean effort as far as offered services. We've been posting on it on social media, producing, you know, between 7,000 and 9,000 meals a week at all of our elementary schools. I've been posting on it on social media. You saw our assembly line. These folks have been rocks in there, ensuring that our families continue to get access to food services, and they deserve all the gratitude and all the commendation in the world. And so I'd like to read their names publicly and acknowledge their efforts. Joshua Kreutz, Director, Lori Craigel, Assistant Director, Alex Perez, Assistant Director, and to our staff, Mariela Barbosa, Tony Santuli, Giovanna Tasaico, Gloria Matamoros, Belitza Cortez, Angela Monica, Angela Salazar, Najwa Abulnaja, Wendy Aliman, Yakira Echona, Dominica Minuto. And so we thank them, and we will continue, thanks to their efforts, be able to continue to offer food services during the summer, several days a week, along with other partners. And again, we thank them, and they deserve a tremendous round of applause and commendation for their work. Our food pantry and some of other families in need, you know, could not have been operated without the assistance of many different groups over the course of the closures. It all got started with the Bennett family, the Robison family, the Berman family, and the Parentureal families, who reached out to me at the very beginning of the closures and were wondering if, you know, and asking if they could donate food bags. And so they were the genesis really of my idea to run this food pantry. And so initially, we started off with, I think they delivered 25 or 30 or 40 bags, and then it just kind of took off from there, where I said, you know what? This is a great idea. And so I really have to thank those families for really starting off this effort. That was over our spring break, the initial spring break, where we were able to get food to families. And so I thank them for that donation and the original idea. We've had a number of other donations, Rosaleen Mink, District Teacher Gendal, Mr. Jeffrey Butler, who's just been coming in somewhat, you know, inconspicuously, but I felt he, you know, he should be acknowledged. Our Air Force Our Air Force Junior RTC, which was an amazing effort that they put together and really kept us well stocked for. A number of weeks. The math fund members, which is a group of math teachers with and Janice De Rosa. They donated a hundred twenty five dollar Shop Right gift cards. From monies that they had accumulated over the course of their their lottery collections and things of that nature, which was a huge donation. Tomorrow, on Friday, rather, we'll be receiving a donation from the Mount New Home Run Club. Couple of teachers, Mallory De Marco and Catherine Connors came up last week. And the Petrucci Family Foundation through Coach Grant made a donation of a thousand dollars to a local family. And last but certainly not least, Liberty. Teacher Stacy Marcus did her twelve, twelve smiles, twelve, twelve, twelve miles, twelve. Twelve miles, twelve schools, twelve miles, twelve smiles. And she did a route. Two, several weeks ago and raised five thousand dollars. And so there will be five hundred dollars going to a family in need in each of the schools. And so. We thank all these people for their tremendous generosity and looking out and thinking out for fellow brothers and sisters in the community at this time of need. And finally, we've had a number of organizations who have have helped and continue to help us. In our efforts with the food pantry and with our food services. Tony Kit, Tony's Kitchen. Adam Montclair, for several weeks now, has been delivering a hundred. I'm sorry, three hundred ten item weekly food parcels for families at Washington School. They've let us know that they will continue to assist us over the course of the summer. And so we're extremely thankful to them. And I'd like to thank Councilwoman Matute Brown, who facilitated that connection with me in Tony's Kitchen. And got that moving. I'd like to thank Dr. Johnson Diaz and the Grassroots Foundation. Not only have they been donating menstrual supplies to the pantry. But also more recently have been doing weekly food drops. And so we thank them for their generosity and taking care of those needs for our community. The Cynthia Cumming, who's and her staff who've done just an absolute yeoman's job down there at the food pantry. There were times when we were running a little bit low at our pantry. And they plugged in and got us supplies when we most needed them. And so we thank. The Food Pantry Holy Trinity and Cynthia Cumming and her staff down there. And finally, the Life Christian Church. Pastor Terry and his group over there did two humongous donations to us. That kind of said to us, hey, you know, this, this isn't just going to be a two bit operation here as we stack these boxes in the hallways. It said, you know, we really thank you to the largesse of various organizations to have the opportunity to really have a legitimate kind of food pantry annex here. And so we thank them. For those two large donations they did. And and, you know, we've had so much support. It's truly been a testament to the strength of this community coming together that we've managed to navigate this. This challenge successfully and get to the end of the school year. And it will be the strength of this community. That will enable us to continue forward successfully regardless of what challenges we may face down the road. And so that concludes the staff, community and student recognition for tonight. And with that. I would turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent. For curriculum instruction, Mrs. De Mendes. There are a number of curriculum which are on the agenda tonight for adoption. And I've asked Mrs. De Mendes to come and speak to the process. You know, by which those curriculum were reviewed, revised and submitted for approval. Ms. De Mendes?
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Kascone, Board, Community Members. This evening, prior to the curriculum development, just wanted to congratulate all our seniors as well. All of our students for making it through this two thousand nineteen school year. Darlene Folas. Congratulations to you, to Ms. Butler. And also a thank you to all of the people who really work with us on the academic end. To make sure that the e-learning was successful this year. We had all of our teams of instructional technology, Diana DeCosta, Time and Thomasy. Our supervisors, our principals, our assistant principals, everybody really came together to make sure that. The e-learning was as best as we could employ to make sure that students receive their. Instruction throughout the end of the year. So a part of that work has been curriculum development. And so then the board this evening. Has fifty six curriculum writing projects that you approved in September. And now we've seen them through completion. For approval and implementation in September. These projects began to be developed in the fall of the two thousand nineteen school year. Curriculum Writers Underco, three days of professional development where we write together. We have vertical and horizontal. Articulation opportunities within that curriculum development process. As curriculum is being developed and as resources are being identified, they're also placed into the budget. So. Any curriculum that you see that you're approving tonight and the resources that are identified are already included in the approved twenty twenty one school budget. At the end of the curriculum writing cycle in May, we, as supervisors, review the curriculum for quality. We review it. To make sure that the assessments are aligned. We review it to make sure that. Especially moving forward, we're really looking to look at all of our resources, content. Ensure that diversity, representation, inclusion is present in all of our curriculum. And we have. A lot of work to do in that area. That is a part of our process. And then we bring it to the Curriculum Council. The Curriculum Council is comprised of. W O E A staff members, teachers, administrators and supervisors. Who review the curriculum, who provide feedback, ask questions, make sure that it is completed prior to coming to the board. So we've gone through that process. Again, there are fifty six projects that we have written this year, of which six of them are new courses. The new courses is are the History of American Musical. Urban Art and Communications, nine through twelve, the Home Maintenance and Repair, Life Skills and our School Counseling and Personal Finance. To highlight just a few of the curriculum projects here. Personal Finance is a new mandate from the state. It's offered in grade six through eight. And when we're providing school finance or personal finance at the middle school. At the sixth grade, it's on a thirty day cycle. Seventh grade, it's a forty five day cycle. And eighth grade, it's in the advisory. So it's. Integrated into their coursework, into their cycle coursework. We already have personal finance at the high school. There were revisions made to that curriculum and it is included here. In addition to that, you will see the School Counseling Curriculum that is formally written this year. At the high school counselors call students into their offices by small group twice a year in the fall and in the midyear. In twelfth grade, they're pulled with their ELA classes. They all come down during a scheduled period. And tenth grade, they're pulled from US History One in November and December and eleventh grade from PE. And ninth grade from Biology. In January, everyone's pulled again to fulfill course requests. And January through May, there are the junior conferences where the parents and students meet individually. Also, lessons are implemented through Naviance. And at the elementary, each Guidance Counselor pushes into the K through five classrooms, five times a year. They do character education, HIB, in addition to all the state mandated red ribbon, weak, anti-bullying, anti-violence. So this is how the. Curriculum is implemented for school counseling. At the middle school, they are pushing in in the advisory periods. Again, for HIB, career exploration, Naviance and Character Ed. In this curriculum, you will also find our ELA curriculum for grades four and five. This was a great. Accomplishment this year to review all of the grade four and five curriculum. Last year, we began feedback sessions with the staff under the leadership of Beatrice Hanratty. This year, our new supervisor of elementary ELA. She really did a phenomenal job at working with our staff to give feedback, to conduct listening sessions, town halls. Cohort discussions where they viewed a primary lessons in a school. They were able to see that implemented. They were able to ask feedback, see demonstrations and model lessons. And give us all of the feedback that we really needed to consider this year as the curriculum was revised. And so then here in this curriculum, you will see a revision of the unit assessment, linked transfer goals, our PBAs. Our essay writing, the incorporation of grammar and vocabulary. So this is really in response to all of the feedback that we received last year. And this year, every teacher was able to participate in the feedback. We did bring this to Curriculum Council, which there are elementary teachers as a part of that council. And it was. Really, really well received, received a lot of praise there, that curriculum. They've also asked us to make sure that we complete the K three. Curriculum prior to September to avoid any gaps. And so then there will be a team that will be writing K three. This summer to align to to this level of curriculum development. It was very, very well done. And so throughout that process, there was an ongoing evaluation of how the curriculum was being developed and we will continue to do so. So next year. Between September and December, all fourth and fifth grade teachers will continue to participate in cohort discussions, provide feedback through survey. And through our professional development. We will collect that feedback and simultaneously run the curriculum that we're implementing alongside a diary. So diary means. That we're taking note of any revisions that may need to take place for the following year or any tweaks that need to be. Taken into consideration. So that would be our ELA. For Social Studies, you have various courses here specifically sixth grade, US History, World History, US History One and Two. This was revised two or three years ago, but the current revisions really take into account. Pushing in all of the performance based assessments, common writing assessments, all of the accompanying rubrics. We did go through the New Jersey Amistad Curriculum for these revisions, the Stanford History Education Group. And other organizations with matrices to make sure that diversification is included in this curriculum. However, we are putting together a committee for next year to really begin a good. Examination of social studies alongside new standards and alongside all of the feedback we've been receiving in this area in partic. In particular, so that we can. Make sure that all of our students are represented, that the narratives are appropriate and that the history is accurate. At the upper levels for honors shaping Western thought, individual society, law, rights and responsibilities. Here you will see topics such as politic, politics, liberty, justice, property rights, law enforcement of law. So all of those things. Are incorporated in these revisions. And then I think lastly with. Social Studies is that we're looking at very concrete professional development objectives for the twenty twenty one school year. Partnering with different organizations to really have critical conversations around the Amistad Curriculum, around representation, around inclusion, around LGBTQ. And all of the mandates that accompany those. For Special Education, in this curriculum, you will see a curriculum for ID, intellectually disabled in our artistic ELA. This is to in or in direct response to the Special Education Audit. We were asked to revise. These areas, make sure that we are really preparing. Specific curricula for students with disabilities in these areas. According to the Dynamic Learning Maps and the essential elements there. So these are the students who are not eligible for. Taking state assessments proper and JSLA, right? They're exempt from those. And so then we have to. Revise the curriculum here to align to those essential, essential elements for the Dynamic Learning Maps. We've incorporated performance based tasks that are differentiated for our students. And we've identified supplemental material that would better support their learning. There is a life skills course here that is new. And in this course, it's for self-contained programs. For the students to gain skills in order to increase their independence. And again, this is for our special education students at the high school, a select group. And that focuses on self hygiene, housekeeping, meal preparation, et cetera. Again, all of these resources, texts have already been included in the budget. So there's no additional cost. And these were approved to be written at the beginning of the year. So here are the completed projects. They will begin in September.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Questions from board members? We'll go from where we used to sit back in the good old days when we were in person. Mr. Rothstein, anything?
Never enough time to get my thoughts together before the front calls on.
I had that seat for a year.
I think that certainly what, what caught my attention when I first looked over this list was. The personal finance courses. And I believe that's so important and was such a gap in. In education when I was younger and for so many students were so long. And I was just hoping you could take a minute to just tell me a little bit more about that. Who who has an opportunity to attend those courses and approximately, how long are they?
Sure. So this is for all middle school students, the new courses of grades six, seven and eight. For sixth grade, it's a thirty day cycle, seventh grade a forty five day cycle, grade eight, it's a ten day cycle through advisory. Some of the topics are responsible money choices, income and careers, goals, budgeting, taxes. Saving, credit, debit cards, banking services and financial literacy. All students attend the classes in six through eight.
That's excellent to hear. And the whole list is, it's exciting to see that one in particular is near and dear to my heart. I think we're doing. A terrific service to our students by having those offerings here. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
Right, Ms. Triggs Gales?
Thank you, Ms. De Mendes. I had had a few questions, but I think you actually answered some of them. But can you tell us exactly what's the difference between the sixth grade US History and sixth grade US History Honors?
Yeah. So one, first of all, honors is going to be a faster pace and it's going to require greater independence. And it's going to be more self-directed by the student. There will be a lot more coverage of content. And they'll go into greater depth of the content across the scope and sequence of the curriculum. I think in some, that's what an honors course would do. There's a heavy, heavy, a much heavier emphasis on the writing and on those primary documents, et cetera. So that's what we'll see at the honors level.
So it's wider and deeper. Okay. For some of the other courses that I, in Social Studies in particular, I'm referencing. In the future, if you could give us the grade levels that would be eligible to take these courses. And then let us also know what the credit, credits are. So if it's a full year course or if it's an elective. That would be helpful as well. Let's look at the Visual and Performing Arts. Middle School, grade seven, Middle School, grade eight. What, what exactly is that?
So that's Fine Arts at grade seven. It's a general course and Fine Arts at grade eight. This is really talking about the foundation of design, art techniques, principles of elements in design. They really take a look at personal creativity, successful beginning artistic experience. And they move through the more element, the essential elements of drawing, color painting, ceramics in in seventh grade. And then they move up. Into eighth grade to deepen that content.
Okay. And did I hear you say that some of the special education courses. Were doing that as a result of the audit that was done? These were recommendations?
Yes. So here on the curriculum for special education, you will see primary autism reading and writing for K one and two. You will see ELA for self-contained autism, six, seven and eight. You will see ID, which is intellectual disabilities for ELA grades K through two, as well as nine through twelve. These were all in response to the special education audit. In addition to. Being asked to look at programs, go visit schools. We were also asked to revise the curriculum to really align to the dynamic learning maps, to. Consider all of those essential elements, to differentiate those performance based tasks and assessments for the students. And to introduce some additional supplemental materials. So that's what we will find in all of these curricula.
So these are basically all new?
They are revisions because they add on to the General Ed, right? So we take the General Ed. And we revise the General Ed to make sure that the students who are eligible for these or who are finding themselves in these courses to be able to. To be successful. So we're adapting curriculum, the General Ed curriculum.
Right, but we weren't doing this prior to the audit. That's what I'm trying to ascertain.
Not have all of these features in our General Ed differentiated curriculum, correct?
Okay, great. The Life Skills Course, is that new or is that just a revision as well?
The Life Skills Course is new. This is for a specific special education population at the high school. It alludes to the high school Life Skills Course. It's aligned to state career readiness practice standards. And really thinks about housekeeping, independent cooking, nutrition. cooking, nutrition, consumerism, career exploration for, for those students.
Okay. And I, I'm happy to hear that as we look at the ELA K five, that we're getting everything done. So we have four and five, and over the summer, we're going to get K three done. And happy to hear also that we're going to be in that continuous improvement loop where we're evaluating what we've done to make sure that we're hitting the mark. So these, these pacing guides go with the units of study that the board purchased last year?
Yes.
Correct? Okay. Okay. So we're ready to roll now. We're ready to roll. Okay, great. All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Ms. Merklinger?
Actually, Terry covered a lot of my questions, but just to follow up on the life skills and I think maybe career awareness.
Ms. Merklinger, I'm sorry, can we just pull your laptop down? We can't see your face. Thank you very much.
Do we have any, or we have, we looked at the 18 to 21-year-old special ed program?
We have looked at that program. I could get you details and send that to you or have a presentation prepared.
I was just wondering if there were any new courses or if we, you know, as we're doing these revisions and add-ons to the general ed or based on the audit, if there had been any recommendations for that population of students. So I appreciate that. But other than that, everything looks great. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Tenny Clip?
Thank you, Ms. Mendez. I think most of my questions had been answered by my other colleagues on the board. I just wanted to double check. We did talk about earlier in the year about going above the standards, especially where it concerns some of the Amistad curriculum. And I wanted to make sure, is, is this reflective of that? I know you talked about we're hitting the standards, but will we be going beyond it with these revisions or is that coming?
Yeah. Well, I think we're going to really dig into that work this year. We've certainly aligned our social studies curriculum is, is aligned to Amistad. We, or better said, Amistad is integrated into and throughout our social studies curriculum. But there are many other objectives that we'd need to really identify formally and then work through the curriculum to revise. So next year, our intention is to set those objectives, set committees together to really begin to look at what we'd like to accomplish with our social studies curriculum and our others, you know. So thinking about social justice, we're wanting to integrate it across all of our curricula, right?
Great.
Oh, but this is going to be a key to the work of the diversity, equity and access committee next year. And then in conjunction, in conjunction with our curriculum developers to make sure that all of our curriculum is representing our students and the history well.
Great. Thank you very much. No further comment.
All right. For myself, on the sixth and seventh grade personal finance, that cycle that you're talking about, what, what does that come from? Is it another class that's coming away or is it just being integrated into math or something?
It would be integrated into a rotation. So let's say there's a related arts rotation, then it would be a part of that cycle. So if it were like a Spanish that's rotating, and I'm not sure what would be at each grade level, but let's say it's a language and it's a, an art class that it's in a rotation or a music class and a personal finance or STEM courses rotate.
Gotcha. That might be something we might want to look at, at a later date and just get a sense of, you know, what the middle school schedule looks like. Because I remember a few years ago when we added, I think it was Mandarin, we lost some art time. I remember, you know, hearing from one of the art teachers, so a few years ago about, you know, that did it just reach the point where there just weren't enough days at all for her to do what she wanted to do there? So just something to look at. I know there's, you know, there's a lot that we're required to pack into the day, a lot we want to put in the day. So just something to keep an eye on.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I think that closes out that section. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Folas, you've been sitting here. Curriculum, you've got anything? Please, feel free.
I would like to add a comment to the personal finance aspect of it. I think it's great that we're encouraging kids to learn about it from a young age because as the Board of Education, we can't be too reliant and make assumptions that students will find that information at school or from parents because a lot of us are first generation immigrants and stuff like that. And so we lack that knowledge. I think it's really good because in my experience with personal finance, it seemed really cramped. It's a very necessary skill that you try to squeeze within one semester. So giving students that preliminary knowledge in middle school will help allow the club, the course requirement in high school to be more comprehensive. I think that one suggestion I would have is that in teaching it, we try not to be too dependent on resources like Everfy. I know in my class, my teacher was very reliant on that. And so most of our class looked like coming in, doing an assignment on a computer and not having the opportunity to ask questions or talk about personal experiences. So I think that especially to be the most effective and to really have our younger kids understand it, like it should be conversation-based and use different forms of trying to communicate the importance of personal finance.
Great. Thank you. That's great feedback. Thank you.
Excellent point. All right. Closing that section out, we're going to move on to questions from the public on agenda items only. But before we move into this, I know we have a lot of people who are watching tonight's meeting, which is great to see. I know many of you don't probably attend meetings frequently, so I just want to explain how we deal with the public comment part of the meeting. We have two separate places in the agenda for public comments. The first one, which we're about to begin, is for questions and comments on agenda items only, which means you can only speak during the section if your question or comment is related to an item that appears on the agenda that you see on the screen. If you're here to talk about anything that doesn't appear on the agenda, we have a second public comment section a little bit later in the meeting. It only takes usually about 15 minutes after agenda comment is over before we get to that section. And then you can speak about anything you'd like. You can speak once in each comment period, that is, if you have something related to the agenda for right now, and then again later on, regardless of whether it's an agenda item or not, for three minutes. When you're on, you'll see a countdown timer on the screen. If you run a little over, we'll ask you to finish your thought. If it goes on a lot longer, we may have to cut you off to move to the next person, just so that we can be fair to everyone. We try our best to be even-handed with that, especially when the meeting has a lot of people who wish to speak. We're very interested in what you have to say. So if you do run out of time or if you just prefer to, or if you want to amplify or repeat what you say in your allotted time, please don't hesitate to email us your thoughts. Our addresses are on the website. They're all first initial, last name, at westoranschools.org. So with that, we'll open agenda item comment. For any item that is on the agenda, click to raise your hand, which you can do at any time. You don't have to wait for the previous speaker to finish. And when you begin, please do state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. One thing we also mentioned, we do have some call-ins. You also can participate in public comment. By doing that, you hit star nine and that will put you in the queue. We will ask your name as I do not have that information. I do have your phone number listed. So we have here first, if you can just follow the prompt on your screen, Tesra?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. All right. First, Tesra, 24 Nav. First, I'd like to thank the superintendent for the public recognition of our faculty and staff behind the scenes. I know that there's a lot of heroes that we may not hear about. And I particularly appreciate the fact that you put effort and thought into the pronunciations and that you read every single name. As someone who was not born or raised here, I appreciate that effort. My question is on the curriculum. So on the personal finance piece, so I see six to eight, nine and 12. And I know Assistant Superintendent mentioned, I believe, credit cards and debit cards. Is there anything in there about credit score? In, in my business, I see that as a challenge, you know, we grow up, we do well, we make good money, but keeping our credit is a challenge. And so it would be great to have that element there. I know that at least at the high school level, some teachers leverage the community members to come in as guest speakers to talk about personal finance as well. So that resource is out there. The other is, is there anything on an elementary school level? I remember one of the assignments my son, who's a second grader going to third got was to plan, to help plan a vacation for his teacher. And it was a really great exercise, I thought, because it helps them think about, okay, what's the trip going to cost? What's the hotel going to cost? And so I think, I don't know if there's anything on elementary school level. Correct me if there is. My son is only second grader, but perhaps thinking about that as well. For the word language, I see Spanish. As a district, do we offer any other languages? And then this is more of a comment for the history, for the US history. I'm hopeful that with the conversations that we're having as a district and with the diversity, access and equity team, that we'll be able to incorporate more of Black history and a little bit more accurate version of that. That's it for me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Robertson, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please?
Hello, how are you?
Hi, Mark.
Hey there. Mark Robertson, 11 Cheshire Terrace. First of all, I just want to say that thank you to our superintendent, the board and the district team for a job well done and to our community for a job well done during this crisis. Very difficult task and you've helped a lot of families and a lot of kids. Regarding the curriculum, Ms. Mendez, I applaud that we are finally addressing grammar and vocabulary. I've only been bringing it up for a decade. But I had a question. In, as we're addressing it in elementary school, what are we doing in terms of articulation and carrying that through in six to eight? That's part one. Part two is, are we including at any point Latin and Greek roots? Many of the top-ranked public schools and public school districts in the nation have been doing this. It helps kids to decipher words. What are we doing in that regard? Second, on the regard to the curriculum, in seventh and eighth grade, and this is both to Mr. Alper's point and to Ms. Folas's point, you know, we, we were already facing a challenge in seventh and eighth grade by forcing kids to rotate between STEM, art and music when many kids were talented in all three areas. Now we're adding to another subject to the rotation along with the language rotation. And I applaud our adding, our, the personal finance element, but why can't that, I have two parts to that question. One, why can't it be integrated into math and social studies? We used to integrate things like entrepreneurism into social studies and it can certainly be integrated into math. And number two, if we already struggled to balance STEM, art and music, and now we're throwing something else into the rotation along with multiple languages, how are we going to do that? How are kids going to get enough time with any particular subject area or have the chance if you're talented in STEM, art and music to address all the above? And in regard to a point Ms. Merklinger mentioned, on yet another, a third area of the curriculum, when we're talking about spec ed and we're talking about career development, you know, what really, I, I hope, I'm looking forward to another presentation on this, but what are we doing really to address career development for the 1821 program? And what are we doing differently to address career development nine through 12? Have we even explored some areas that, that a number of industry companies like Microsoft have been exploring in terms of, for those who are on the spectrum, who have a talent or in the digital area, are we helping kids to develop in computer sciences or computer languages? Are we exploring other areas of workshop and, and where, you know, students can develop in terms of carpentry or, or other areas using their hands? What are we actually doing that that's different that can help them to have better opportunities for their careers? Thank you very much. And it's great to see you all.
Thank you. Good to hear from you, Mark.
Okay, thank you. Jackie Bazin, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen?
Good evening, everyone. Jackie Bazin for Rainbow Terrace, West Orange, obviously. Simple question with curriculum, Ms. D. Menendez. How are you integrating major motion pictures and documentaries as part of teaching tools within your advanced curriculum, particularly those that tell stories of, of minority populations? That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Bazin, I apologize for the pronunciation of your last name there.
That's fine. No worries.
Thank you. Keith Dent, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please?
Yes, hello. This is Keith Dent. Yes. Address 385 Valley Road. Yeah, what my question was, well, thank you for the board for the presentation. I think it was very, very informative. One of the issues that I did want to ask is in regards to the personal finance, or it's more of a comment to try to use Khan Academy as a resource, especially if we will possibly be going to, I guess, delayed openings or hybrid openings where some of the students are home. I think it would be a great opportunity for the students to look at the resources that are available and that it may not restrict class time. And it'll be more fun and enjoyable to possibly look at some of the resources via YouTube or what have you. So that's just a suggestion. And then also, how will entrepreneurship be incorporated into that? A lot of our students, especially students of color, don't have a comfort level in entrepreneurship. And I see that on a daily basis because I'm a director of an entrepreneurship program that's geared toward adults. And just some of the fears that we see from them, afraid to open up a business and also having the, having the capital, because that's usually the easiest way to open the business if you have your own capital. So I think it's, if that can be incorporated somehow into the program, I think that would be beneficial. And, and then one of the comments I also have was how the, how is the Amistad curriculum incorporated? I would love to know that a little more because I have a son that's in the seventh grade. And I don't know if it's mainly because of him, but I don't remember seeing a vast, vast curriculum or studies in regards to African-American history. So, you know, I'd love to hear about that a little more. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have Sarah, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please?
Sure. Sarah, during 47 Oak Ridge Road. I just wanted to say that I love the idea of personal finance. And I wanted to add that my son was in sixth grade last year. He attends a private school and they actually integrated budgeting and stock purchasing and investments into their math curriculum as a group project. So they were never tested on it because they were learning other topics concurrently, but it really allowed them to explore those topics. And my son found them both really interesting and he doesn't find very many things interesting in school. So I just wanted to add that, that that was another possibility. That way children don't have to choose to do it. It could be something that's happening concurrently with group projects and also learning how to work with a group member. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sandra, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please? Hi, Sandra, there?
Hi there.
Hi.
Hi, everybody. Sandra Mordecai, 516 Pleasant Valley Way. A couple questions. First of all, congratulations to the class of 2020, the West Orange High School. Well done. Also, congratulations to Dr. Casco on the completion of your first year in district. You've had many, many challenges and job well done. I have a couple of questions on the agenda. Ms. Bogerty and Ms. Rubero are both receiving a $10,000 stipend each. Is that because Ms. Dees left? Isn't there somebody else to promote and give them a raise less than the $20,000? I want to know what are their additional duties that they're getting the stipend for? I also see the Redwood Principal is getting a $5,000 stipend. What, what are his additional duties? And I see the attorney's contracts are on the agenda. I'm wondering if you renegotiated with all vendors to hold the line considering many taxpayers are out of work due to the pandemic. I see that clearly J. Koby is getting $200,000 and Metz, Bestland, Global, 180. I also see an attachment for adopting policies and second reading, but it's not in the agenda, but it's attached. I would beg you to review the special ed policy and the 504 policy before adapting the boilerplate language from Strauss Esme. Congratulations on receiving the CARES Act for $608,102. Hopefully that can offset some of the budget challenges upcoming. And finally, I see you have a list of summer assignments. I am wondering, what is the structure of those summer assignments, given the fact that there may not be typical summer? It's probably going to be online. And also, there's no mention of ESY, but there are many summer assignments listed, but it's not really mentioned what format ESY will take. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. And Elmani, if you can follow- Almani, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
This is Almani Vini, 186 Forest Hill Road. My question to everyone in regards to curriculum, and it is the following. What is being done to make sure that the curriculum is following child development protocols? My concern is oftentimes there is, we favor content, and the sophistication of content over appropriate child development stages for children. And so, what is being done to make sure that we're more in line with the social-emotional developmental stages of our children based on their age grade? And then, you know, once again, second, as it pertains to, and I know we talked about it, but in regards to the African-American, you know, the Amistad, just what is being done or what will be done to make sure that the proper resources will be able to be brought in for that, for the curriculum there? That's it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next person, you have quite a few names on your Zoom account here, so if you can just follow the prompt on your screen, and just give us your name for the record, please.
Hi, this is Shilpa Manjkar, 7 Reed Street in West Orange. We've lived in West Orange for 40 years. I went to the public schools here, and congratulations to all the graduates and all the board and the, all the educators and teachers for working so hard during the pandemic. We were wondering, there's been a lot of unemployment as other people brought up and even deaths due to the pandemic. And last week, in the town board meeting, they said the town is actually under budget compared to where it usually is at this point. So can the taxes be reduced this year or roll over from the excess, from whatever was saved from the physical buildings being closed and many programs being closed? And also, I wanted to say, when I was in school, we didn't have so much diversity in the curriculum, and in fact, one of our world history teachers in 9th grade didn't, decided not to teach half of the book. So I think it's great that the students now and parents are pushing for more ethnic studies and African-American studies and more inclusivity, but I was wondering what accountability there's going to be for the faculty, because we, as kids, felt like we didn't really have anyone to complain to in those days. And I personally even asked him myself, like, are we going to finish this? And I ended up just reading it myself while the other section of the class with their teacher was doing the full book. And West Orange has become even more diverse since then. And also, the Rodney King case was going on when I was in school, and we had a lot of coalition building with other high schools in the area. So I think it's great what all the students and the Board of Education and other faculty have been doing and teaching social responsibility and personal finances and other community engagement. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Kashan, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hello.
Hi, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm sorry to have you here static, my computer's kind of old. But I'm Kashan Abdul Qadir, 220 St. Cloud Avenue. Thank you for having me on to speak really quick. I do have one question regarding the curriculum, and I'm just trying to read through the agenda. I didn't see much about the K3 curriculum. I'm a little concerned. My son is entering kindergarten next year, and I've spoke to a number of parents who have students who just completed kindergarten about the level of, or should I say, lack of, social-emotional development for those students. You have a lot of kids who are coming from preschool, and the level of perceived rigor that they're implementing in a kindergarten is, to me, I think is a little bit way advanced and not really geared toward helping students to develop emotionally and develop those skills emotions to be able to compete or to advance to the next level. So I just want some information about what does that K3 curriculum look like with social-emotional? What resources are you guys using for that? Also, I wanted to know what kind of planning or what are you guys using to identify what does rigor look like for K3 and beyond? What's the difference between rigor and just busy work? And also, how does that, the Amistad curriculum flow into those lower grades? How is information, media, tools, or resources around African-Americans, colored people infused in that grade level? So I'd love some information about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Melinda, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen, please. Hi, Melinda, are you there?
Yes, hello.
Thank you. Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. Melinda Lee, or Melinda Werta, 17 Park Drive in West Orange. My question goes to, I know right now we're not sure what the hybrid is going to look like, but what do we do with the families who aren't comfortable sending their children even on a hybrid schedule and who are still having trouble with the virtual learning? I feel that my son, both my children, but mostly in particular, my son wasn't engaged. I had to really be on him. He's entering the middle school, so I know organizational skills and all of that is really essential, and I feel that he wasn't able to really hone it, and he was just having a lot of trouble even before the pandemic and the shutdown. So that was just one concern of mine.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, do we have anybody else that can use the raise your hand feature located at the bottom of your screen, as well as our call-in attendees can use the star nine on your phone? Just give it a couple of seconds. And that seems to be it. Thank you, Ms. Follus.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things on the board side. I think most of that question's touch on administration more. Ms. Mordecai, on policy, I just want to touch on one thing. When you mentioned the special ed policy, we've actually, through our workshops, been looking extremely carefully at every existing policy versus every new Strauss Esme policy. So wherever there are differences, and we've really identified some pretty minute ones that we've caught, we're taking the time to do the work to make sure that we, you know, get those straightened out. So we're not going to accidentally overwrite anything in the special ed policy, which I know was a, you know, major accomplishment of past board. We spent a lot of time on that, or I don't think I was on it. You guys spent a lot of time on that, and it's extremely detailed. Otherwise, I think, oh, just on the Amistad curriculum, we had a really good presentation, I want to say in November, from Social Studies Department in general. And obviously, there's more to Amistad than just social studies, and, you know, we always can do better, but that was a good presentation. And then in February, there was a presentation that I think was even more tightly focused on Amistad, and that one, I know, had an 18-page PDF in it that had sort of a grade-by-grade description of what was being done. So it might be good to sort of, you know, cycle those back up to the top of the website just because I know we're getting a lot of questions on those currently. And with that, Dr. C, I'll give it to you.
Sure. Yes, in fact, both of those presentations are on the website under Board Presentations, but admittedly, they're kind of buried in kind of three or four clicks, so they're not particularly conspicuous on the website. So that's not a bad idea to put those more visible, perhaps under the Diversity, Equity, and Access page, which is now at the top of the quick links. Just a few follow-ups to Mrs. Mordecai's questions. As it relates to the CST summer assignments, this is a standard practice, which is done annually. These allotments tend to err on the side of liberal, you know, not to exceed, so that they can accommodate an evaluations that need to be conducted. That's in fact what these are dedicated for. We are optimistic that we will be able to do evaluations towards the end of the summer. We are waiting further guidance from the state as to how those would move forward, but we are certainly hoping that we're able to do evaluations towards the end of the summer in August. The ESY appointments were actually, I believe, present on the previous agenda or the one before that. I think it might have been the June 1 agenda where all the virtual instructors were approved to operate within the virtual setting. We did, in fact, create two stipends in the Special Services Administrative Department, if you will. There was previously a retirement within that department of the K5 Child Study Team or Special Education Supervisor. As we were at a point in time in the budget development process where we were really trying to, still needing to close gaps in revenue, we decided for a year to kind of utilize a stopgap measure, which was to basically have Mrs. Ribero and Mrs. Gogarty Fitzgerald essentially assume responsibilities for that position, in essence, take on, you know, split the responsibilities of that third administrative position. That's not necessarily something that we're going to keep in place in perpetuity. We want to see whether that's sustainable, whether that's something where workload can be managed, and if necessary, we would be prepared to try and add that position back into the budget for the following year. We have also created a number of smaller stipends within that department, which are for the purpose of kind of farming out, if you will, you know, specific projects to staff members within the Child Study Team and Special Education Department as needed. So kind of one-off projects, which Mrs. Ribero, Mrs. Gogarty Fitzgerald need assistance with, whether that's programming or PD or things of that nature. But the district actually saved over $80,000 by going with the stipend structure. And again, that's a, could be very well just a stopgap measure for this particular year. Mr. Beaumont has indeed been afforded a $5,000 stipend. This year, he had the service of a full-time assistant principal at Redwood School in Skimmy Jackson. We are, Ms. Jackson is going to be sharing time next year between Redwood and Washington School. There is a behaviorally disabled program at Redwood School, which requires a fair amount of administrative oversight and monitoring. And so, that stipend is to compensate Mr. Beaumont for the loss of that capacity and really, you know, at times kind of risking life and limb. You know, maybe life's a little bit melodramatic, but limb, you know, in terms of sometimes the interventions which he has to stage in order to assist students who might be experiencing some behavioral difficulties. So that is for that. Just speaking to the hybrid schedule, and then I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Mendez because I think she could speak more directly to some of the curricular questions which were raised. But as it relates to the hybrid schedule, as I had mentioned in a previous session, you know, parents who choose not to send their children to school, they have the option to opt out of the hybrid model which we developed. And, you know, that based upon what we've seen presently, though we have not gotten confirmation from the state, is that would be a socially-distanced model, where students would be socially-distanced within the classroom. And they would be, they would not be interacting with any other cohort of students other than the cohort of students who are in the classroom at that time. But if a parent did not feel comfortable with that, they could keep their child home. Now, in terms of how we plan to enhance the experience, I think, you know, we've gotten a couple of key takeaways from our experiences. That's a central focus of our planning work this summer, is to kind of debrief what we've learned. I think one big takeaway, although not the only one, is that we need to ensure that our students have daily interaction with their teachers for the purpose of at least support, if not instruction. That's one of a number of takeaways we've had. And so, for any student who is planning to stay home and learn virtually, they could expect a more interactive, enhanced experience and benefiting from the lessons that we've learned this year. And final point, and just kind of connected to Almani, Mr. Vini's statement, I think when you talk about a critical eye on student development, I think it's more about method. It's more about teacher mindset than it is so much about the curriculum itself. It's about the environment, the classroom environment, which the teacher establishes, the approach to interacting with students, honoring student voice in the classroom, you know, empowering and enabling students to take ownership of the learning process, to establish a community of learners. So I think it's much more about that philosophy and that mindset, and it's all interconnected. You know, when we talk about SCL, both for teachers and for students, when we talk about being culturally inclusive, being racially inclusive, all of it centers on that environment in the classroom and creating a student-centric environment. And it also connects to that accountability piece, which the one young woman mentioned, which is having consistent expectations about what our instructional values are, and then through our performance evaluation process, and then also through our mentoring capacities and our professional development, having a collective commitment to walking that on a daily basis and having consistent, critical conversations if necessary when we're not seeing that. But in order to do that, final piece, then I'll turn it over, I promise, Ms. Mendez, the final piece is that we need to become more comfortable having, delivering fearless feedback to one another. We have to become more comfortable about engaging in critical conversations. In order to do that, whether it's on the student side or the staff side, it needs to be a safe environment. It needs an environment where people feel supported. And on the staff side, I can tell you, and I think this comes as a byproduct of ongoing turnover in the superintendent's office, is that there is, there has not necessarily been a feeling of security, a feeling of being comfortable with that, and we're building that. I think we've established a great first year. We're going to continue to do that. And I think as we do that, people will feel more comfortable and confident being vulnerable to having tough conversations about their own craft. I also think that as we commit to bridging these disproportionals and inequities, okay, we make this a non-negotiable, we will have no choice, okay, but to up our game collectively and individually in the classroom in order to have that, because that's not going to happen with wooden curriculum. It's not going to happen with teacher-centric instruction, and it's only going to happen if we establish, you know, environments where people feel safe and people feel supported and valued. And with that, I would turn it over to Ms. Mendez.
Thank you, Dr. Casco. I'll try to take them one at a time for the ones that I can answer this evening, and then for the ones that I would need to get more information off, forward that to the board. For the credit score that is included in the Financial Literacy Units of Personal Finance, specifically understanding the importance of a credit score, understanding the components that affect your credit score, the advantages of credit and/or not, and what is spending power. So those things are woven into the Financial Literacy component or unit of personal finance. With regard to the word languages that are offered in the district at the elementary level, we offer Spanish. In 6th grade, we offer a cycle of Mandarin, Spanish, and French. And at the middle school, grades 7 and 8 through to the high school, we offer Spanish, Mandarin, French, and Italian. With regard to the grammar and the articulation, we have a K-12 Language Committee. We have 17 participants on that committee, supervisors, and 15 teachers, where at the beginning of this year, until we paused due to the school closures, that committee was working through grammar. They are building a progressions chart to make sure that the grammar is being included across the different units of study, and that would speak to the rigor question as well, right? Making sure that we have the grade level or the grade-appropriate content that's being taught in ELA at the different grade levels, looking at that vertically to ensure that rigor is dropped into the appropriate grade level. Also, let's see, for the rotation of personal finance in grades 6 through 8, the rotation is with career computer applications. So it's not with the language. It's similar to that concept, right? How the language rotates with the other courses, the art and music, but this rotation is computer application, personal finance, and it's in the career exploration rotation. For special education, there was work done last year for the 18 to 21 program. We can revisit that just to give a fresh update, to see where we are on what's happening in the 18 to 21 program. In regards to the different areas for digital areas and carpentry, this board agenda includes a new course in that area. It's called Home Maintenance and Repair. It's called Home Maintenance and Repair. So we are introducing, excuse me, this course. It's a half year course and it's really taking a look at a look at all of the systems instructions, structures that make up our homes, basic installation, repair of masonry and framing, electrical plumbing, HVAC. And this will be a course that will build toward a pathway in this board adoption. Will we also have Java and programming, programming and C programming in visual basics? There is an incorporation of Microsoft Office into the career education classes that we've incorporated. That was prior to this agenda. With regard to major motion pictures and documentaries in our advanced courses and stories of minority populations. I know that we do include, but we could do more. And so then there is a lot of work that's going to take place in that area. Again, under our diversity, equity and access committee, we're going to establish some very concrete objectives over the summer. We're going to revise our planning that we had before we left for the year and really move into looking at our curriculum, setting these objectives to include all of the feedback that we continue to receive and to include all of the research that our teams have been doing. With regard to what specifically have we done with Amistad? Mr. Alper pointed us to the November and February presentations. There's also crosswalk for Amistad and how we're integrating that into social studies. I think the area that we need to focus on primarily is elementary K five. That's where we see that there's much more work to be done. We hope to accomplish that by the partnering and professional development that we plan to offer next year. We have to see what that will look like, whether it be in person or something on on that looks like Zoom. But we are planning to partner with Dr. Leslie Wilson from Montclair State University with regard to understanding American history. That will be presented to all of our elementary schools, also partnering with Dr. Kil Calfani, who's the Chair of Africana Institute at Essex County College, to present the importance of Africa in world history in eighth and ninth grade. Also to discuss how secondary teachers can enhance diverse perspectives while teaching US history and civics. And that would be for grades six, seven, 10, 11 and 12. We're also partnering with the NJ Amistad Commission to come to the district instead of us sending staff out to present to the elementary staff on diverse materials teachers can infuse within the classroom in order for all of the students to identify with the content. So that is for social studies and questions around Amistad. Yes, Mr. Almani, if I need, we're going to have to really think about child development protocols. We do think about human development, child development as we're developing our curriculum. Our teachers are all participant to the curriculum development. We do have both vertical and horizontal articulation when we're developing curriculum. That means that if I'm a fourth grade teacher developing curriculum, the third grade teacher is there with me as well as the sixth grade teacher. And we develop curriculum across those grades to make sure that we're considering what is age appropriate. We do believe that we need to begin to address the content in the elementary levels and at the lower elementary. But we just need to make sure that we're considering how to do that and what are best practices around that. The K three ELA curriculum will be developed over the summer. There is a team already good to go. It will appear on the next board agenda for approval. So once we get approval from the board to go ahead and write, we will begin doing that in July. And that will be presented to the board in its completion in August for implementation in September. That will include the integration of performance based assessments. It will include the grammar, the vocabulary and all of the other revisions that the four or five curriculum went through. With SCL, social emotional learning, our Director of School Counseling, Cheryl Butler, has been participating with a lot of the members of her team, the school counselors plus SAC coordinators in SCL training, Jacqueline Headlam and many others. We're looking and exploring an SCL curriculum so that we can bring that to the board as a complete curriculum and then integrated into all of our content areas. So that is a project that we're working on, but we are looking to formally adopt a curriculum in the area of SCL. Our teachers did begin to attend some preliminary training at the beginning of this year, as did our administrators. And there was a lot of work that started again with our school closures. We've had to put a hold, but we are resuming all of our work again, whether it's virtually or in person. We're going to move forward with that work. I think I have covered hopefully all of the questions that were asked. And if not, I can certainly provide the board with some updates as needed.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. All right, closing out that section and moving forward. Next on the agenda is adopting some board policies that are up on second reading. We're going to modify the list of attachments to remove two policies that are being tabled temporarily. Why would you a little further work on them? Those were numbers 1613, 1613 and 5533, 5533. So with that, may I have a motion for the list of policies not including those two?
I'll motion. I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
Mr. Alper?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if it would be if it's appropriate for me to speak to this or be more appropriate for maybe either Mrs. Merklinger, Mr. Trick scales to maybe just provide some context to our process and and how we've we've arrived at an adoption of a rather sizable number of policies, just for the edification.
A good idea, especially since we have a larger audience, for sure.
Okay, I'll start. This has been a labor of love, so to speak. There are volumes of of policies that school districts have to follow. They are called mandated policies. And then there are other policies that school districts have some leeway. Some of the language must remain the same. And then there are other policies that boards of Ed can approve that there are no mandates. So when I say mandate, I mean that the state legislature as well as code from the State Department of Education, these are mandated policies that every school district, all 600 and some odd in the state of New Jersey must follow. We are in the second year now here in West Orange of phasing in Strauss Esme, which is a policy management company that will eventually have online policies, regulations. And and let me just back up and say policies are the work of the board. That's the primary responsibility of a board of Ed is that they are to have policies under which the school district runs. Then on the day to day basis, the administration follows the regulations. Boards of Ed do not have to approve regulations, but boards of education must approve all policies. So as I said, we're in year two of phasing these in. So what we've done this year is to take all of the mandated policies. We've divided them up and each board member has been responsible for reading the Strauss Esme policy, reading our current policy and looking for discrepancies. Where there are some, we will be meeting on Wednesday night to talk about those discrepancies for the mandated policies and where we need to make adjustments. If our policy has language in it that we want to add to the mandated policy, we'll be doing that. It can't be anything less. It has to be the mandated policy and we can certainly add to it if we like. And so the ones that are in sync with our policies and that we are ready to move on tonight, that's what you find on attachment two here. And we've done a very, a very thorough job, I think. I mean, it may not be perfect, but we have worked very diligently to ensure that any policy that we're moving forward represents the business here in the board of Ed. But again, we have to be very cognizant of the fact that the mandated policies are set forth in code and in the legislature in law. So that's where we are tonight and Ms. Merklinger and I are on the policy committee this year. So we've worked very closely with Dr. Cascon in getting to this point. Need to thank all of our fellow board members. And our work has just begun because we're just getting through the mandated section. And then now we're ready. As I said, on Wednesday night, we'll be looking at those policies that need a second look that are mandated. And then our next phase, we're actually moving into the policies which can have a little wiggle room with the language. So we'll be very busy this summer.
If I could just add to that, I know some folks that are joining us tonight had some concerns about policies that were worked on by previous boards and community members. And I just want to assure you that we did look very diligently at those. Some of those we did pull off to take a sec, as Tari mentioned, to take a second look and dive a little bit deeper into those. And then work with Strauss Esme on what steps we want to, you know, what we want to include or what if we are going to separate anything out. But just to assure the folks that did have a lot of, put a lot of time and effort into those policies that we recognize that. And that's why we have actually pulled those off of the original list for for more work. So I just want to thank everyone for their input and their diligence on on this project.
Thank you both for heading it up. Labor of love for some of you. All right, Mr. Calavano, any further discussion?
Mr. Alper?
Yes, sir.
The numbers of the two policies that were striking from the list.
Yep, they were 1613 and 5533.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Sorry, Mr. Rothstein, do you have your your E-buds possibly? You're just you're just quite low.
I will put those in.
Great, thank you so much.
All right, Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales?
A resounding yes.
President Alper?
Also a yes. All right, up next, personnel items one through five. May I have a motion?
So moved. I'll second.
All right, I'll start discussion by pointing out we have a few retirements. Margarita Road at Liberty, Melissa West at Mount Pleasant and Nora Estrada at the Betty School. So congratulations and best wishes to all three of them. Any other discussion on personnel?
I'm not sure, Mr. Alper, the Nora Estrada.
Oh, you know what? You're absolutely right.
And Melissa West too, yeah.
Those are resignations.
You're right, and in the Estrada case, taking another position, I completely forgot that she's a little bit later in the personnel section. Sorry, congratulating people who were keeping, all right. Sorry about that. Seeing no further discussion, Mr. Calavano.
Oh, wait, sorry, I was looking at my notes, I apologize. Just a quick question for item number four under the appointments. These are grant funded. So are the, what happens, is this a typical scenario for us? Or what happens if we lose these grants? Is that a possibility and how do we manage the staffing?
This is typical for us, we receive something each year. And this is on at this point in time because some salaries were adjusted during the year with longevity payments. So we had revised a percentage that's being charged to the grant versus the LEA budget. So this is just cleaning that process up.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right. Mr. Calavano?
Mr. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right, next curriculum and instruction items one through six, may I have a motion?
Yes, moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. Calavano.
Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes.
All right, next. Sorry, I just need to cut in for a second. We had a few people raised their hand. I just want to remind everyone that you guys can raise your hand again once the next public comment starts and not before. Thank you.
Sure. All right, up next, finance, special services items one through seven and business office items one through 23. May I have a motion?
Yes, moved.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? And there's a number of pages to turn through there, we'll give you a minute.
Ken, I did have one question. It's actually not a question, but I'm hoping maybe Mr. Calavano can just speak to it again. This had come up before and I believe one of the speaker or someone who had commented asked about moving money or funds that weren't used. And I believe, Mr. Calavano, you had spoken about this when we asked back when the pandemic had started about where the savings were and using the funds. And I believe we cannot use funds that are allotted for this year for anything going forward. If you could just explain that maybe again to the folks that are on today's call and weren't on the previous meetings.
Well, at this point, we cannot go back and change the tax rate for next school year. March 19th was the deadline for all districts to certify the tax rate for the upcoming school year. So what happens now, any funds that remain, you know, in the budget will drop to the bottom line. And our first priority is to put it towards our reserve. We're allowed to have 2% of our budget, which is somewhere over $3 million. I could tell you, we haven't reached $3 million at year end, any year since I've been here, which is the last six years. We're hoping that this year at least we can get to the $3 million. And if we happen to have more than $3 million, then we have an option this year to put up to $1 million each of these funds. And it's not going to be that much, but it'll be an emergency reserve. So for the things that we haven't, things that are unforeseen to us, you know, with the with September opening, we'll be able to use those funds. And then the other fund would be a capital reserve fund, which currently we have about, I think, $579, which you really can't do any projects. So we would be able to at least put some funds away in that category. What couple of things now, you know, we have a lot of outstanding purchase orders that we're going through right now to see what needs to be paid, what needs to be canceled. And also, we budgeted for extraordinary aid this year, the current year that we're in now, $1.5 million. And that's like, we have to apply to the state to receive funding. That's, you know, for certain costs for special education in district and out of district over a certain threshold. And then it's prorated. So we're hoping, you know, we're but we budgeted $1.5 million. But what happens if we don't get the $1.5 million? Nope, that'll have to come from our surplus. So we're hoping we'll be able to at least achieve that 1.5, but there's a lot of unknowns at this point.
Thank you.
I have a question. Mr. Calavano, I had noticed that the nursing services vary anywhere from $53 an hour for an RN to $75 an hour. I was just curious, do we have any control over that? Do we have to go with those services that are $75 an hour as opposed to those that are 53?
No, we actually, you know, we put several companies on for approval, but there are certain services that one provider may provide to us for a certain child. And that's why, you know, I think there's one on there for $75 and that's for a certain trial that we have in district. And that will continue that nursing service with that child. But for the others, we have the flexibility to use either the firm, either the companies.
So we can look for those that aren't quite as expensive?
Right, if it fits our needs, correct.
Great, thank you.
And just one comment and then one question. I just wanted to say that all of this is what we're approving is already budgeted for with the approved budget. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then my only other comment, which I had mentioned earlier to you was I was concerned about the item 18 about the chimney repair at Kelly. While they were the lowest bid and I'm excited that, you know, we're able to do the work for that. I just want to make sure, I know sometimes construction projects can go off scope and end up costing more and finding hidden problems that they didn't know what was there. How do we handle that as a district if they find things that need to be repaired or that were over budget? What, you know, of what their award is?
Well, actually with this award, we're under budget and we were surprised about this number. And we were surprised about this number coming in. So we reached out to the company to basically give an out. If you can't do the project for this cost, and here's all the other results, then let us know now because we don't want you to start the project and then you default. They came back in writing saying that they will be able to do this project within a dollar amount that they, $52,000. And of that $52,000, there's a $10,000 contingency built into that number. So right off the bat, we have $10,000 to play with. Now also, we have the ability to increase 20% of this dollar amount by board resolution. So anything, 20% of this $52,000, we can actually approve on an agenda. When it goes beyond that, then we have to get certain approvals from the state. And hopefully, we won't get to that point. But Integrity happens to be one of our roofers that we've had in the past for many years. And they were very reliable. They did excellent work. And we're actually pleased that, you know, they're actually going to come back and do some work for us now. So we just have to keep an eye on them, make sure that they stay within this $52,000 amount.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm glad to know that they're, they've done good work for us in the past. So thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anything further? All right, Mr. Calavano.
Mrs. Marklinger?
Yeah.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales?
Yes.
President Albert.
Yes. All right, and last, item D, reports. May I have a motion?
Second.
All right.
I missed who moved it.
You're muted.
Ms. Marklinger, Ms. Marklinger motioned and Ms. Trick Scales seconded.
Sorry about that.
All right, any discussion?
We heard each other.
All right, Mr. Calavano.
Mrs. Marklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales?
Yes.
President Albert.
Yes. All right, what I'd like to do at this point is take a short break. Let's say no more than 10 minutes so that those of us who've been meeting since 7:30 can get away from the computers for a couple of minutes. And that way, we can start public comment and go straight through for as long as we need. All right, see you back here in 10 minutes. All right, it looks like everyone's back. Lauren, just give us the go ahead if you're ready for everything to resume. And then I'll say a little bit more and we'll get into public comment.
Yes, thank you. I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, great. So before we start public comment, a couple of thoughts from me as the board president. First, a rumor I heard the other day that I just wanted to address. Apparently, there's a story out there that the district would have all sorts of money if only it hadn't paid stipends to coaches and teachers for spring sports and activities from that canceled season. Just to clarify, we paid those stipends in full because the state required us to do so. That was language the assembly inserted into the same bill that allowed online learning to count toward the 180-day requirement. Ordinarily, we pay coaching stipends in two installments, one at the start of the season and one at the end. And there was really no issue with the first installment because the spring coaches did a great job of both preparing for the season and then meeting electronically with their players throughout the season once in-person school ended. But once the seasons were officially canceled, what should have been something for the administration and board to discuss, the state took that out of our hands completely and just ordered that the payments be made. It's not insignificant money, but it's also not sums that would have made a big difference to the coming year's budget either. New Jersey also ordered transportation companies get paid in full for all the students that they haven't been transporting. On some levels, it all makes sense. You know, they're trying to keep the economy going and ordering some of those payments does that. It keeps the lights on for some of those companies, lets them continue to make lease payments on their vehicles and so on. Hopefully, it keeps their workers off of unemployment, but at a certain point, I don't know. So just moving on to what I'm sure many of you want to discuss personnel. Obviously, we've heard a lot in the past couple of weeks, and we're looking forward to hearing your comments shortly. One of the reasons we took that break just now, we've actually been here in closed session since 5:30. So we wanted to make sure that we could go straight through no matter how long we needed tonight. I do think one of the great things about our schools in West Orange is that we really subscribe to a mentality of it taking a village, right? That it isn't just one person's responsibility to look after a student, to make sure that they're on track for college, that they're thriving at home and at school, that everything's all right with them. It's a multi-layered approach with a lot of supports at a lot of different levels. In the middle schools, that starts with a team approach where the kids are divided into teams, and those teams meet regularly and discuss their kids, compare notes. So if one teacher notices that Ben is struggling in his class, the other teachers can chime in and see if maybe some additional supports are needed, that it's a problem that goes beyond just one academic class. And when you move into the high school, that continues on a number of different levels. You know, we've tried really hard, both the board and the administration, and really past boards did a lot of heavy lifting on this with previous administrations. We're not claiming the credit for this. But collectively, we've tried as boards and administrations to make sure that there are layers upon layers of support at the high school. One of the reasons we have so many different programs and activities at the high school is to make sure that there's a village looking after as many of our kids as possible. You start at the top. You've got a principal with a master's in social work degree from NYU, who's worked on the child study team and as a dean of students before becoming principal. He's always understood the importance of building the right culture for our kids and making sure that everyone on staff is looking out for them. First thing he did as principal was to move to the rotating drop schedule. That made it so that all 2,000 kids in the building could have lunch at the same time. And that means they're able to get extra help to check in with staff members, to have their club meetings, to just hang out in the library and relax. And to me, that's your first layer right there, creating this positive school culture. We built smaller academic programs so that kids would have a home. The Collegiate Institute, TCI, that's 111 kids right now. IMS and INH are about another, IHS are about 75 more each. It gives kids a smaller school within their schools. There's a tighter circle of folks looking out for them. ROTC, the Mountaineer Squadron, that's another 120 kids with Major Marchesini and Senior Master Sergeant Thurston, providing guidance and mentorship and giving that group of students their own community. Band and Color Guard, same thing, about 225 kids who've got Mr. Kelly on their team. The theater kids have Mrs. Mebs for the same thing. Layers. Coach Sekela and the Mountaineer Mentors, 110 kids who aren't just part of a smaller community themselves, but it's right in the name. They're there to help their peers, too. Hundreds of kids participating in athletics, 400 last fall season, with their coaches helping them. Coach Grant, one of the reasons I wanted to hire him wasn't just because it was obvious how well he'd mentor the 100 kids in the football program. He has them each have every teacher sign off on their grades and behavior every week during the season, but because he spoke to us about his relationships with colleges and his ability to find kids' slots in college programs, money for college to help them continue their education. Coach Blake does the same with track lots of great Division One schools for our kids, countless examples of other coaches who do the same. Again, it's layers of support above and beyond college being just the guidance department's job. The ASAP program, every one of those kids participating in athletics is getting their grades looked at, and they're automatically sent for tutoring if they drop below a 2.0 in any class, with a lot of check-ins along the way to make sure they're coming along okay. That's about a quarter of our student athletes in any given season. Sign offs with the teachers, the parents, the coaches, one more layer to ensure success. What else? Mountaineer Academy, another 40 or so students working closely with Coach Grant. Our CTE programs, after-school clubs, 1,500 kids were in an after-school activity last year. The caseworkers for our kids with IEPs, the counselors, the deans, the coaches, all these activities. The Summer Step Up Program, that's another 55 kids coming in this year. All of these things are intentional, and they're all there because they provide layer upon layer of support for our kids, above and beyond their official counselors. And remember, most of our kids aren't impacted by just one of those things. They're hitting two or three or more. The layers of support are interacting with one another. You're in the squadron and you're playing ice hockey or basketball. You're in the school play and you're building sets at rehearsal, or you're in orchestra or one of the choirs or on the step team. Even a non-athlete, a quiet kid like my own senior, he's playing video games in the library at lunch. He's seeing teachers for extra help when he needs it. And when school was on, he was after school once a week for an electronics club. And he's also had a fantastic guidance counselor as one part of that village. And I'd hate to believe that any of our counselors would do any less for any of our kids. But if you're experiencing that, please reach out to Ms. Butler and Mr. Moore about that. But so let's talk a little bit about guidance, too. One of the emails I got this morning spoke to the importance of maintaining a good ratio of guidance counselors to students and linked to some really interesting pieces of research, all showing that having a low ratio of counselors to students leads to better outcomes than having higher ratios. This one study used a ratio of 278 to one or lower as what they called a low ratio, which is good. And 300 to one, meaning 300 students to one guidance counselor, or higher than that as a high ratio, which is bad. And there's another recommendation from the American School Counselor Association that says the ratio you want to shoot for is a little lower than where that study was. They say 250 to one. So it's important to note here that as part of the budgetary process back in April, the administration determined that our counselor-to-student ratio for next year would actually be 194 to one if we kept 11 counselors, or 214 to one if we dropped down to 10 counselors. And arguably, if you want to count the two student assistance counselors, the SACS in there, then we're currently at 164 to one with 13 counselors, and it'd be 178 to one with 12. But however you look at it, we're significantly below that 251, I'm sorry, that 250 to one ratio that the School Counselor Association is recommending. So when the administration is trying to balance a budget and is looking for ways to not just close a million or a couple million dollar gap between what we have and what we want, but trying to figure out where to most effectively put money, and they look at those layers of support we have and see how good those ratios are, I think it's a little easier to swallow, even acknowledging that counseling is really important because we know that eliminating one of those positions will still keep us well below that 250 to one ratio, and it would permit the salaries and benefits for that position to be allocated to somewhere more urgently needed. One of the issues we've had in the districts for years, I don't know how many of you had your kids in elementary school benefit from Resource Room or Basic Skills Help, BSI, that cuts off after fifth grade. You get to middle school and you lose all those supports. So last year, we were able for the first time to add academic support for sixth graders at Edison. And this year, we're going to be able to do that for seventh and eighth graders for the first time, helping them ramp up their academic skills for high school, which is critical for their success in that environment. And unfortunately, when staff reductions have to be made to accommodate these types of reallocations of resources, New Jersey law mandates that the first employees to be adversely affected are non-tenured employees. That's not discretionary on our end. It's not something that we can negotiate with the unions. It's the law. The budgetary process is hard. Losing good people is never easy. But as you can see, we do everything we can to support our students on as many levels as possible. When the administration makes these tough decisions, explains their reasoning, and backs it all up with data for the board, and we know we've got so many different additional layers of support available, these are unfortunately the hard trade-offs we have to make. And of course, obviously, all things being equal, more counselors are better, just like more reading specialists, more nurses, more classroom teachers, more behavioral specialists, more academic support teachers. We want to be able to have more of all of these, but we have to balance our wants and needs with what the taxpayers can afford. We can't just look at one level of position. We have to think about what has the most impact on the entire village. So before we go on with public comment, a few things. Just as before, we have a three-minute time limit for each comment. Please be respectful of that so that everyone can have a chance. We want to hear from everyone who wants to speak, and the time limit makes that possible. And we'll listen to everyone who's here tonight. If you aren't able to finish in time, or if you're just more comfortable, or if you want to just reinforce what you say, again, please feel free to email your comments to us. All our addresses are on the website, but it's all just first initial, last name at westorrenschools.org. And lastly, while we do want to hear from you and we take your comments very seriously, we're not allowed to speak about personnel in any really specific manner, even if we really want to, even to the extent that we can't comment on whether or not something someone has told you is actually true. It's one of the more frustrating things about board service, that there are things we're required always to keep confidential. So I apologize in advance for the fact that we won't be able to respond to the extent that you and probably I might want. So with that, we can begin. Please, again, start with your name and address, and please watch the timer. If you run out again, we'll ask you to finish your current thought quickly, but eventually, we may need to move through to the next person. Thanks. Lauren.
Thank you very much. And again, for anyone who has called in, as we do have some phone calls, it is star nine. And again, for anyone in the audience, you can hit your raise your hand button at any time you are putting a queue in the order that you push your buttons. Mr. Robertson, if you can, please follow the prompt on your screen. Mark, are you there? You can follow the prompt on your screen to unmute.
My bad.
There you go. No, it's okay.
Mark Robertson, 11 Chester Terrace, here this evening as a black dad, former board member, former social worker, and as a professional student outreach and career counselor at FDU to advocate for the reinstatement of West Orange High Counselor, Guidance Counselor, Michael DeBois for two reasons. Oh, by the way, guidance counselors have the highest level of contact with students. And I, you'll see I have a different perspective. Mr. DeBois, in the opinions of many parents and students whom he served, has been an excellent guidance counselor, knowledgeable, empathic, insightful, empowering, dedicated, passionate, creative, and effective. And also, your ratio of high school students to blackmail counselors is 2,000 to one. Have, you know, counselors have this highest level of contact. Mr. DeBois is the only African-American blackmail counselor in a school district where the largest segment of students are African-American, and black males are always the single largest or second-largest subsegment of students. The district, you know, comprehensive equity plan is an empty promise without staff who are somewhat representative of the large population served. Why is this important? Well, the district's, as we look at, well-documented as well as believed in professional counseling fields, including academic counseling, career counseling, psychological counseling, the level of diversity and dearth of African-American or black males as compared with the pronounced need for blackmail counselors is a critical issue. Black students, particularly black male students, often feel a level of understanding, identification with the experience, a deeper, more personal, authentic experience with a black counselor and males, blackmail counselor. Black males, you know, can sometimes more easily feel the sense of hope and possibility because they have these life guides who actually look like them, can inspire them, and people they can aspire to be and to emulate. For many black kids, the presence of a blackmail counselor helps to break down walls, reduce anxiety, trust issues, and all that in the counseling relationship. For non-black kids, non-African-American kids, these blackmail counselors serve as not only a presence and a presence, and in terms of their performance, they are seen as role models, as equals, as professionals. They help kids and parents to see them as people they can trust. The district's equity plan, you know, is disingenuous at best if the district fails to address diversity in staffing, diversity in representation, diversity in counseling, teaching, and role modeling. We have great teachers of every race, creed, and color. Great. I've had, you know, one child go through the system and another one who's in the system. Yet, even in my experience, my kids' experience, there have been points where their experiences were marred by a lack of deeper understanding, even bias. That's right. And I've even documented it. You know, we'll never fulfill our promises to the district unless we fulfill our promise for diversity in staffing. You know, I want to want you to reinstate Michael DeBois as a guidance counselor at West Orange High. You know, I've watched your videos, you, the superintendent at the board, you talk about Black Lives Matter. If you cannot embrace in personnel and policy decisions the deeper equity principles and facts of life that underlie this statement, then you're entirely missing the point of equity. If you cannot embrace Black, Black Lives Matter as a statement that recognizes fundamentals and include diversity in hiring, diversity in representation, then your utterances are no more than a convenience, a political necessity for, you know, connected with a popular chant. Without commensurate actions, your words and policies are empty. Please reinstate Michael DeBois as a guidance counselor at West Orange High School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. We have, next up is Tez, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Excellent. Thank you. I have three questions, comments. The first one is on the vendors. I'm wondering, I know that some organizations have sort of procedures in place to ensure that the vendors they work with are diverse, and there's opportunity for minority or veteran-owned or women-owned or even better, local businesses. While a lot of the businesses are local or semi-local on the vendors list, I did notice a few that are about an hour away. So I'm wondering what if any things are in place. If none, can we put something in the works, especially considering just the bigger conversation we're having about, you know, being inclusive and offering opportunities for everyone? The other is kind of related to the vendors. The bid for, what is it, the chimney? I noticed there were seven bids, anywhere from 52K to 306. That's a big difference. Do we go with just the lowest number? Or is there some sort of logic around how we pick that? And can we perhaps kind of weave this into my prior question of considering diversity and locality? My second question is, I noticed a list of placement out of district tuition fees. I also noticed that in one of our prior meeting agendas, there's a tuition fee for West Orange, right? So do we have any, anybody else from outside of West Orange coming in? Do we get any revenue from the reverse? The third is, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions and comments about just black educators and counselors. And Ken, help me understand, I always had a question about tenure versus value, right? And I come from corporate world where sometimes there's a lot of bureaucracy and red tape that I don't understand and agree with. So I understand why it has to be done, and I don't know what could be done this time around. My next question that becomes, does this mean that we need to have different conversations and negotiations when it comes to the bargaining terms? Because it's clear that while I don't know this particular individual, that a lot of the community feels strongly. And so what can we do in order to change the law that makes these type of hard decisions possible? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sandy White, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, good evening. Sandra White, 16, Fundus Road. Just two quick things. See that the city and the county parks are opening, have been open for a while, kids are playing in the park. But when is the high school and soccer field is going to be open? Because Mr. Albert said that with, you know, Division One students. Because Mr. Alper said that with, you know, Division One students in the district and my son's home can't work out. And, you know, he's been home since spring break back in March. And he likes to be able to work on the field that's level, not in parks where it could be, you know, not as, it could be a little more dangerous for him working out on grass. And, you know, after we hear what Mark Robinson said, I would like to also throw in Mr. McNeil as to be reinstated as well as the vice principal over at Liberty Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Jackie, if you can once again, follow the prompt on your screen.
I'm Jackie Bazan for Rainbow Terrace. Dr. Kascone and members of the school board. I started a petition two weeks ago for the district to retain school counselor Michael Dubose at West Orange High School. And I'm requesting the board reinstate Mr. Dubose as a school counselor at the high school. This has been an awful year and it's not getting any better anytime soon, certainly not from what I can see. In light of the emotional impact of the pandemic, the loss of lives and family members, economic supports and basic needs, the struggle for human rights for black people who have suffered far too long right here in West Orange, along with the rest of the world, the challenges of the e-learning environment, the upending of our students' lives. The board should be doing everything possible to ensure our students have a strong culturally competent counseling team to live up to your commitment of the development of strong, diverse, safe, and respectful schools and communities. Terminating Michael Dubose is counter to that commitment and it's a detriment to all students under his care, but especially to black boys like my son. And let me be clear, culturally competent is different than culturally aware or culturally sensitive based on the few hours of training that you provide to your staff. We need culturally competent people in the school counseling department. These kids need to have trust with the people. And I'm sorry, my son's experience at the high school, he didn't have all of those great supports. He didn't buy into a lot of that because it just wasn't for him. The one support that was for him was his school counselor, period. That person is the one who got him to school. That person is the one who got him to the next level throughout his studies and even during this very difficult time. In two weeks, we have amassed over 6,500 signatures in support of reinstating Michael Dubose as a school counselor. I've posted daily, I've tagged you guys have had to see and certainly read the comments of students, of families, families who have been impacted by him, as well as the community who see this as a necessity, as an essential part of the team. So I, you know, my support is echoed by all of these people who signed this petition, who include, by the way, our mayor, Robert Carrisi, Councilwoman Susan McCartney, Councilwoman Cindy Matute Brown, and so many others who feel strongly about this issue. All of you have been doing these, you know, race conversations over the last couple of weeks, last week or two. It is completely disingenuous. You sit there and you talk about how you want to go out and you want to recruit and you want to hire people of color and have balance and so on. You have someone who's right in front of you. So explain to me how on earth the board can justify the time and the financial expense of searching out new recruits when you already have one who's ready and willing to serve. Someone who has been deemed highly effective in his job, not just by the people who he took care of, but by his superiors. The decision you made is wrong. It does not benefit the students and I request that you make that change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Melinda, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen, please. Melinda Lee, if you can unmute your mic. There you go.
Hi, how are you? Sorry about that. Melinda Lee, 17 Park Drive South. I had a couple of questions. I didn't notice that Ms. Cooper is one of the teachers at Washington Elementary School and she wasn't on the list of retired retirees. It was announced that she was retiring this year. As well as I noticed that there's a new appointment for Ms. Darlene Berg for principal, acting principal at Washington. Does that mean that, is Mr. Mayo retiring or will there be two principals? Or is Mr. Mayo being moved to assistant principal? Another thing that I did want to ask was, what is being done to help to hire and retain diverse teachers and staff? I know at Washington, there's a really large need for bilingual or multilingual staffing in order to communicate to the parents better. Another question is, how are we empowering our teachers to reach out to the students who fall in, you know, fall between the cracks or don't, aren't really as active, they might not be as engaged? What are we doing or what else can we do as parents to help empower you and empower our students and our teachers? And that's all.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Gina, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, Gina Velasquez, 22 Corwell Circle. So I'm the mom of an 18-year-old graduating in the class of 2020. And I'm also representative chair for the WILCPAC. This year, so my son is in the special ed program and which will continue at the high school in the 18 through 21 program. So I will be around for a while longer. I'm here to speak on behalf of our special needs students. I don't know if many of you know, if many of you saw the video on social media, which was organized by the student council and class of 2020. It was an awesome video with many of the students sharing words virtually about their high school, school experiences. It was a thoughtful and creative way during this crazy time to capture the class of 2020 and will always be a memory for the students to share with their friends and loved ones for years to come. The problem is, my son was not in it. And neither were a couple of his friends who are in the specked program. That's a problem. I know that, that there were emails sent to him after looking and trying to figure out why he wasn't included in the video. And I did see that they had sent him emails. Well, up until March, the pandemic, my son didn't even have an email address. So it wasn't in his radar to really check emails. He was checking the Google Classroom, but not emails. So I'm just concerned going forward that I was not emailed. A teacher didn't email me or an administrator or nobody followed up. And that's important for our special needs students. I mean, they can't assume that he's just going to know to respond and to do what's correct. I mean, when the yearbook dues are, when the yearbook fees are due, I get an email. And when, you know, I, the lunch bill is due, I get an email. So I, I need an email, I need follow up and I need somebody to have their back, which leads me to the West Orange Warriors. That is a program which I have initially started in last September. Anyway, I know I'm running out of time, but it's a peer-to-peer group which matches the general ed students, which are special ed students, which would alleviate this problem because they would have someone, a partner that is involved in the extracurricular activities, which will then follow up with them and make sure that our special needs students are included as well. So there's more involved to this, but I'm just touching on it because I'm really upset that my son wasn't included. Thank you, and I hope that we can continue on with the conversation.
Thank you. And Ms. Velasquez, please, if you haven't already, drop an email to Dr. Kascone and the board about the Warriors, because that sounds like an excellent idea.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sarah, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, Sarah Dering, 47 Oak Ridge. It sounds like the decision has already been made, but I want to urge the district to reconsider and reinstate Mr. Dubose, the high school counselor. I want to give all of the support to Mr. Robertson's comments, which I agree with in their entirety. Right now, with, you know, COVID isolation leading to increased anxiety and depression in our youth, we need counselors more than ever. In addition, the increased awareness of how systemic racism impacts black youth has made our district state a commitment to diversify teachers, staff, and administration even more imperative. I applaud our superintendent and board's previously noted desire to provide anti-racism training to the district personnel, but I know that no amount of training can replace the presence of black teachers, counselors, administrators, and other staff in the school. All of our students, including and especially our students of color, deserve to have racial mirrors. They deserve to have role models that look like them. And having a student-centered environment means acknowledging the need for counseling support at this time of uncertainty and the need to have diverse personnel that reflects our diverse student body. We can't claim that this is important to us as a district and let the only blackmail counselor go. So I would just urge you to reconsider. In addition, another caller made a comment regarding opening the fields and track. And I would also like to know when those would open. It's kind of grating to me to see the tennis courts open and filled when the track is blocked off, given the fact that running is like the ultimate social distance sport. Other local district tracks and soccer fields have opened, so I'd love to see it happen in West Orange. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, Sandra Mordecai, 516 Pleasant Valley Way. A couple of things. I don't want to repeat what everyone else says, but I agree with Sarah's comments as well as Mr. Robertson's comment. But I just want to add, I sent you a note about a week ago regarding cutting both blackmails, both Mr. McNeil as well as the guidance counselor at the high school, Mr. Dubose. In my past Board of Ed role, I had suggested every year that the new administration get mentored and the response every year is that they do. This is not true. I remember a year ago advocating for a mentor for an administrator. And that eventually happened, but I really don't know what follow-up there is for mentors, in particular for black males. If they're the only black males in a school where almost all the teachers are not just white, but also white and female, don't you think that can lead to a hostile work environment at some point? I just want you to consider that. And another thing, I went back over the budget and I think a lot of the items you have here, you could put off until next year or another budget. The lighting upgrade at Liberty, as that's a brand new school, I can't imagine that there's anything that needs to be done to Liberty. The bus purchase and bus radio upgrade, that can also be put aside. I had also mentioned to you about the spring athletic extracurricular stipends, both for athletics, the concerts, the play season, all the clubs, that never happened. I asked that you have a conversation with the union and see if that, that can be reduced, if it can't be cut. I don't know if that has happened. The school facilities have been closed for three months and it probably will be for the summer as well. I know there's also weight room monitors and things like that. And if that's not happening, maybe there's a workaround. On the budget, you're purchasing 2,800 Chromebooks, 125 laptops, 60 desktops. I would suggest that you reduce that amount maybe by 500 this year and 500 next year in the balance two years later. Safety and security items on the budget, including gaggle and training should all come from the cost grants, which you've already secured, as well as securing our future bond grants. And tonight on the agenda, you approved the CARES Act grant of 608,000. So I would assume the 1.5 that the governor cut from your budget is probably going to be made up from all the grants you received thus far. All the capital projects, the floors at Edison Middle School, library furniture, the painting, those can all be put off. I know later in the year, you plan to put a $50 million budget, $50 million bond on the ballot. I would hope that you're not going to do that, given the current climate. 41 million people have lost their jobs in this country and I believe the town council's budget was 8%. So, and in addition, I just want to reiterate Mr. Robertson's comment. Saying Black Lives Matter at all these rallies that you attend at the Zoom meetings means nothing if you don't follow through with your actions. In one of the Zoom meetings, you mentioned the equity plan. The comprehensive equity plan that's filed with Trenton has nothing to do with passing an equity policy. You have no equity policy and no regulation. Please pass an equity policy. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Danielle Robinson, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Robinson. I live at 337 Aranio. I'm calling the same thing in support of what Mr. Robertson said, what Sandra just said, what Sarah just said. My kids don't even go to the schools in West Orange. They go to independent schools that have historically been majority white. The tuition is very high. And especially for one of my children's schools, I know what it looks like when a, when a community says that they are committed to making sure that they have diverse faculty. My children's school where the tuition are more than $40,000 a year, the faculty at the school was more diverse than it was when my son was at St. Cloud. That is unacceptable. I do not understand how anyone in this district who is in a position of power can say that they are committed to diversity and look at the faculty in these schools. It is completely not true. If you wanted to do something about it, it's not the unions. Please do not blame them. I come from a family full of educators. I understand how principals in districts can move money around to keep the staff on payroll that they want to keep on payroll, right? So I do not agree with what is going on here. I think it is unconscionable for you to get rid of the only black male guidance counselor in the high school when black men, when black boys make up such a large majority, such a large number in the high school. I cannot even believe that you would justify that in 2020, after COVID, after Black Lives Matter. And I'm sorry that you even said that because clearly that is not true. And my second point is, whatever happens in the, in the fall, I would like to know what the plan is. Like, are you speaking to other school districts in other countries that may be going back to school before us? What are you using for best practices to implement in our school district to make sure that the students are learning that they are safe, that the faculty members are safe when they go back to school? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Elizabeth Redwine, if you can unmute your, excuse me, follow the prompt on your screen and unmute your computer.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you very much.
Hi, so I can speak to my personal experience as a parent whose son had Mr. Dubose for, as a counselor. So first, I just want to back up what Mr. Robertson and Ms. Mordecai and Ms. Dering and many other people have said about the importance of a blackmail counselor. And I also have to say that as a counselor, he was unbelievably helpful. And really, it's, I mean, I'm getting choked up. It's like not even an exaggeration to say that he like saved us this year. It was a challenging year. I have a 10th grade son and, you know, the distance learning was definitely something to get used to. And Mr. Dubose, since the fall, was a counselor who emailed us many times a week, would call to check in. I just, I can't speak highly enough of his role in our lives and how hard he worked for my son. So he was our counselor. It makes me, I have three younger kids, so it makes me really sad to think about them coming to the school and not, you know, even having the possibility of having Mr. Dubose. And I think a budget tells us what's important about us. I think if you look at your family budget, you see what's important to your family. So it's just very sad to me that counseling is not at the top of this board's list and retaining the only black male counselor is not at the top of this board's list. And I think the 164 to 1, I think, was the best number that Mr. Alper said. I, the fact that Mr. Dubose had that many students and from September, he was checking in with us that much just feels like an even more incredible job that he did. And that doesn't sound like a great ratio to me. I, I heard what, you know, New Jersey requires, but again, our budgets talk about us. You know, if you spend all your money on shoes and not money on healthy food, then maybe you need to rethink your budget. If you're spending money on lighting, I know Ms. Mordecai mentioned, and not on retaining an excellent counselor who is also the only blackmail counselor. That tells you what matters. And that means that, you know, counseling does not matter as much as other things. That's just, you know, the fact of the budget. So something else has got to go. I hope it will be a tragic, tragic situation for West Orange Public Schools if we lose this counselor. And I speak to that as someone who this counselor, and I speak to that as someone who hadn't Mr. Dubose really save us this year during a really challenging year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, I'm sorry, can you just state your address for the record, please?
Oh, I'm so sorry, 10 Cobain Terrace.
Thank you. Michelle Lewis Fleming, if you can, please follow the prompt on your screen?
Good evening. W. Fleming, 15 Sheffield Terrace. I've had two children go graduate from West Orange High School, one just graduated from college. Yay! But I am speaking with regards to Michael Dubose. I graduated from high school 39 years ago, and I grew up in Western Pennsylvania. And what really disturbs me is the fact that things have not changed in 39 years. We talk about Black Lives Matter. We talk about 46% of our students are African-American and in this district, and we pay a lot of money to live here, and we don't have teachers that look like us. Thirty-nine years ago, I had one teacher from first grade to 12th grade, and I live in a district similar to where I live today. One of my children was fortunate to have a wonderful counselor who was a woman, Mrs. Millington, and she saved us. My daughter had, my niece had one, my daughter had another counselor that I was displeased with. And I think that a big part of that was because she could not connect with the students, at least not with my African-American daughter. It is imperative for African-American men to see African-American men in their lives every day. A lot of these young men may not have fathers in their lives. They may not have fathers in their lives that are really active. They may be working just to keep the food on the table and a roof over their head. And what I don't understand is why we would take that man out of the district. We're giving people raises. Why we can't hold off on capital improvements? Computers, I know we want to buy 2,000 Chromebooks. Why can't we do some other things to keep this man in? As some, I'm just going to echo what everyone else has said as well. If black lives truly matter and you want us to continue to live here, or maybe you don't, because there are some people who don't want us to live here, by based on their actions and their words that I see on all these Facebook groups, we need to, we need to do better. I, I'm appalled, I'm embarrassed, when I, you know, when I talk to other people that live other places where their children do have teachers and counselors that look like them, I just don't think it's the right thing for us to do in this district. And then, you know, when it's time for someone to sell their house and someone wants to buy their house that looks like me, who's also African-American, and then what am I going to say to them? Oh, they don't have any, they have five black teachers in the high school, and almost 50% of the students are people of color? And lastly, I was just reading Black West Orange earlier today. I read it every day. It's all the comments that all of the students, prior and current students are making. And it is devastating to read someone talk about affirmative action when someone works their butt off and is able to earn a scholarship or earn, excuse me, they actually earned admission to probably Harvard, and they can't, and someone talks about affirmative action. It's appalling, and it has, we have to do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Alper, can you just remind the audience that the policy on how many times they're allowed to speak during this time?
Once per person. So if you've already spoken during the second public comment period on any topic, you unfortunately can't speak again, but you can certainly drop us an email.
Thank you very much. I have Sandra, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please?
Hi, there's a lot of Sandras here tonight. I'm Sandra. I'm at 6 Fairmount Terrace in West Orange, and I'm here today to talk about Mr. Michael Dubose, Dubose, the only African-American counselor in a school that's almost 50% African-American. Representation matters, and I really, really urge you to reinstate him. I remember the first time I had an African-American teacher in the West Orange school system, it was 1991, and his name was Mr. Scales. He was a principal at Edison Middle School. Now that two of my boys are coming up through the system, I see that we have made some progress, but boy, do we have a long way to go. I'm wondering, how many African-American teachers and support staff do we actually have now? And what are we doing to retain them and recruit more? I'd also like to talk about, I think it was Mr. Alper who said we have these levels of support, and I would like to respectfully disagree with him. I have a special-needs six-year-old at Kelly Elementary School, and I haven't had any kind of check-ins at all as a parent of a special-needs student. And my son is a freshman at the high school, and I, he didn't even know who his guidance counselor was. And that's, we're just talking about basic support there. As a teacher myself, my, 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 I'm full, I'm, my plate is full, so I can't imagine expecting other teachers to then take on that role. And how do you exactly measure their success in that role as extra support staff, which requires them to go above and beyond their extra duties? I'm wondering how you measure that. I also wanted to say that, I did write a note to Dr. Kesskon about this, and he said when we look to cut the budget, we try to retain teachers, and I think that's great. I'm a teacher. But I remember from my time at West Orange High School that I didn't spend a lot of time with my teachers one-on-one. I don't even remember most of their names, but I do remember Mr. Hill's name. He was my guidance counselor, and I had a lot of one-on-one time with him. We, you can't, you cannot replace the role of a guidance counselor. And especially in our school with our population, representation matters. Mr. Robinson spoke of an inherent bias in school, and I completely agree with him. Research supports that. Do you know that black students are more likely to go on to college if they have black guidance counselors? So I really think you need to find the money, move the money around, you know. Like I said, I'm a teacher. I was laid off twice, my, in my first two years of teaching, I was laid off both years, and they found the money and I got hired back. So I urge you, please find the money and hire him back. We need him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Kashan, can you please follow the prompt on your screen, please?
Hi, I'm Kashan Abdul Qadir, 220 St. Cloud Avenue, West Orange, New Jersey. Two things, I know, I heard Dr. Kesskon mention early about the HYBIT program, and I'm just not clear, was that listed or posted somewhere on a website? So if so, is there more detailed information that's easily accessible to parents to get more information about this HYBIT program? And what is going to look like for our students who are intern high school? I have two, I have one intern high school and one in an intern kindergarten. So I really want to know what's going to look like for us, and also, what does that opt-out option look like? Will it be opt-out option online, and how would it look like, opt-out option look like for our kindergarten students? So I want more information about that if possible. And second, I want to echo also the sentiments of Mark Robb, I mean, everyone so far on this call this afternoon, I mean, this evening, regarding the guidance counselor, Michael Dubose, same sentiments. I, I'm a former educator and administrator, worked at Central Office, so I understand the idea of budgets and we have to do reduction in force and look at just titles, and sometimes with titles is about, you know, last one in, sometimes the first one out. I totally get that concept. However, there are ways to call back certain individuals, there are ways to still do that, if you can move monies around, there are ways to get that done. Because I, I'm a firm believer, you can't speak about Black Lives Matter and say this, but you had, this is all empty without the actions. So there's things that can be done. There's power, Central Office staff, Dr. Kesskon and his team can look at ways to bring this, this, this guidance counselor back. So again, I mean, it was so much said regarding him and regarding the idea of what Black Lives Matter, Black Lives Matter mean, and I encourage you to really look at that. It's more about representation. And like my daughter who came here in 4th grade at St. Cloud, for her, there was only one black teacher there, and it's sad. And a large majority of that population now is growing of colored students. So what are we doing to hire and retain our students that we, teachers that reflect the community? So again, I echo everyone else's sentiments, and I'd like to know and see what are we doing, what is the plan of action regarding like retaining and hiring teachers, guidance counselors, staff members that reflect the growing population here? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I went one too far. Rhonda, if you can, please follow the prompt on your screen?
Hi, this is Rhonda Powell, 17 Club Boulevard. I am echoing a lot of the sentiments that have been expressed already, particularly by Mr. Robertson and others, but I want to add something else, two other things. One is that I do feel like there was an attempt to preempt this conversation that, that folks maybe knew was going to happen by explaining all of these things about the ratio of counselors to students and trying to assure us that we're in a good place in West Orange. Everyone, or just about everyone who's spoken, has spoken about the issue of black students and black male students in particular in this district needing to see people who look like them in order for them to really have full equity in this school district, and that is true. There is another issue here as well. Both of my sons had Michael Dubose as their counselor this year. He was the second guidance counselor for each of them in two years. For my younger son, my older son is graduating, so this will be it for him. For my younger son, he is now, what, going to have a third guidance counselor in three years? Continuity is important. Trust has to be built. Relationships are key, and he is going into his junior year and needs someone who knows him to guide him through the beginning of the college exploration and application process. And instead, he's going to have to start all over again with yet another person who does not know him. That is an unfair burden to be putting on these students. And if it's happening to my junior, I can only assume and suspect that it's happening to quite a few students who are rising juniors at that school. It's completely unfair, and it's inequitable. So just to add to the additional reasons why Michael Dubose needs to stay, he is an excellent counselor. He was with us every step in the way with the college application process for my son, who does have special needs and who does have an IEP and who did get accepted to college and who is going in the fall. He excels in every area of his job. But in addition to that, he has built relationships with students, many of whom, if those relationships are disrupted, will be going on to their third counselor in three years, and there is no way that you can tell me that that demonstrates equity or adequate support or adequate levels of support in counseling at the high school level. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Jonathan Redwine? If you can follow the prompt on your screen?
I, I think I got it.
Thanks, yes, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. I just want to, first of all, thank everyone who's spoken up until this point. I agree with what everyone has been saying about Mr. Dubose, and my wife spoke about our personal experience with him this year. And I've heard, I heard the board president say that we have to make hard trade-offs when our district determines to terminate employees, and I think what that means is that we're imposing values on the process of termination. And one of the values that I think we have as a community is the strength of diversity of our community and also in our schools. And we know, I mean, everyone here knows that we have to make hard choices. I think we need to have guidance to form those choices, and I think we need to have them, that guidance written down, so that we as a community all know what factors in when our district needs to make hard choices and needs to terminate employees. So one question that I have is whether there's a written policy, procedure, or process in place that specifically guides the process of termination decisions? And does that procedure specifically and explicitly say that diversity in our staff is critical to the strength in our schools? I think it should. Does the procedure instruct the decision-makers in our administration and on the board to evaluate the impact to diversity in the district and to the individual's department? I'm very concerned that the termination of recent hires, because of the relatively recent focus in our district on diversity and the diversity of our faculty and staff, means that if we are not mindful and deliberate in our preservation of diversity, the administration will disproportionately impact employees of color. And assuming that this is true, and after listening to others who have spoken this evening, I think that it likely is, then we have a systemic racism problem. And I join others who have spoken this evening and calling on the administration and the board to rescind the termination decisions and to very carefully, mindfully, and deliberately evaluate termination decisions that may be necessary going forward. I really think we need a process in place. I really think it needs to be very specific, it needs to be public. People need to know what it is, and we need to know exactly whether the value of diversity in our district is something that we consider in a way when we're making these types of decisions, and we need to see evidence of how that that factors weight. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you. And we have Deborah Robinson? If you can follow the prompt on your screen? I apologize if it's DeBora. One more time, Deborah Robinson? If you can follow the prompt on your screen to unmute? Deborah, if you can hear me, can you click the lower your hand button? So that way I can see if you can hear us or not? Okay, we'll come back. Up, we'll come back to you, and we're going to go, while I try to do some tech for you, Mrs. H? If you can follow the prompt on your screen?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate, congratulations to the graduates. I have two boys that went through the system years ago. I moved to West Orange quite a long time ago, and I know Mr. Scales, and I can't talk enough about what Mr. Moore did for one of my older, my eldest child to get him through high school. And I know the power of what it means for our, especially our black boys. I have two sons, so I'm advocating that we do, that we look into this budget to find a way to keep these African-American men in our school district, because they mean the world to our, to our, to our students, to our black men, our black children, our children of color. I was subbing years ago at St. Cloud, at least 15, 16 years ago, and I remember, I'm a teacher now in a district, but I remember when I walked into that classroom and these little girls were right outside the door waiting to come in, and I was looking at the lesson plans, and they were so excited to see a black female in that school, because there wasn't one. And we can't continue, and that was at least 15, 16 years ago, and here we are again, back at this same thing. Our schools haven't changed, and that was at least 15 years ago, and we're back here again, talking about this same thing. So I implore you to find the money. If our words, if your words mean what they say, then put them to action and keep our black men there. We need administrators that look like our, our students can look up to. They need to see people in position that they can be role models to. We need teachers that they can look to, that they can, that they can guide them. We desperately need this in our district. And I implore you all, those that have, that make the decisions to do this for our students, if you mean what you say and Black Lives Matter and our children matter, then we will find money in the budget. We all pay high taxes here to live here, and our children deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mrs. H, can you just state your name and your address for the record, please?
Sure. Tracy H., 61 Seaman Road.
Thank you. Nicole, if you can, please follow the prompt on your screen?
Hello.
Hi, thank you.
Hi, Nicole Ruffo for Overlook Avenue. Wow, there have been some incredible comments, and I wanted to echo all the remarks from Mark, Michelle, Sarah, Jackie, Tracy, the two Sandras, Kashan, Danielle, Rhonda, Jonathan, Elizabeth. These comments regarding the importance of Mr. Dubose's position as a guidance counselor really speak to how important this moment is. As a mom of four white children in the district, I also see the necessity of having diverse teachers and the learning and growth of all children. Last year, our Gregory's Last year, our Gregory School community lost two incredible teachers of color. Mrs. Nyack and Mr. McNeil, who were very valuable contributors to our Gregory family, were taken from us with really no reasoning. This is the time when we keep talking about SEL and mental health being so important, especially with the coronavirus and now with the racial justice conversation. It seems like it would be such an absurd time to remove this incredible guidance counselor who happens to be a black man, which also is so important at this time. I think it was, one of the speakers referred to the black, Black West Orange on Instagram. If you haven't gone to see that on Instagram and seen the personal stories that people are writing in about what it is like to be black in West Orange. Some of the stories are really hard to read, and it just proves the fact that we need other people who look like them and who can speak on their behalf in the school so these situations are not happening. I was listening to a wonderful Zoom training about how to raise anti-racist kids recently. And an educator, Tiffany Jewell, was giving her definition of racism, that it's personal prejudice and bias and the use and misuse of power. So being nice isn't going to end racism. We need to do more than unpacking our own biases and trainings and looking at ourselves, but we have to look at the institutions where we are, like our school district. And we have to unpack the policies and procedures that could be contributing to oppression and disparities in our schools. I also was thinking, there was a mention on this training about creating affinity spaces in the schools to help with retention of black teachers. That's creating spaces for them where they can feel safe to be together and find rejuvenation, having mental space to connect with other black educators and a safe space where they can discuss things that are going on and find support. I hope that if we don't already have that going on in our schools, that we can look into that. And I would ask that Mr. Dubose's position be reinstated for the goodness of all of the students of West Orange. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah, I see that you are in a different device here. Are you able to hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Deborah Robinson, 11 Clean Street. And I would like to piggyback on the mom who says her child's going to be a junior. Mine is going to be a junior as well, and this is going to be her third guidance counselor. And she's upset, and I'm upset. Mr. Dubose has, she has expressed that she would like to be a vet, and he has made her a whole portfolio on colleges, including HBCU Tuskegee, for her to look at and to review. He has checked on her during quarantine. He has spoken to me in quarantine, and he'll be a waste if he's gone. That's one. Two, you have to look at these teacher salaries. You have a teacher at Redwood who left her position as a supervisor voluntarily, and she took her supervisor's salary with her into the classroom. Why is that? Why, if she voluntarily left that position, why isn't she making a teacher salary? That's two. Three, you said you've saved $80,000 by not replacing Ms. Dees. Where's that $80,000 going? So those are my three issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Joy McLaren, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, I'm Joynez McLaren, 115 Watson. I attended West Orange High School. Six years ago, I attended West Orange Schools my entire life. I've had six black teachers while attending, five black teachers, one black guidance counselor while attending West Orange Schools. Ms. Orange was one, Mr. Ziegler was one, Mr. Polhill, who was fired from Liberty Middle School because he was the last in and the first out. He was the only black male teacher at Liberty Middle School, the only black teacher at Liberty Middle School, and he was fired because he was the last in. Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Evans, and Mrs. Millington, who has already been brought up. I can say from reading the Black West Orange Instagram page, I attended West Orange School six years ago, and I can still relate to some of the posts that a lot of the students are posting recently. So I'm just wondering how you guys are planning on hiring more diverse teachers and hiring more teachers of color? If teachers see that once they get hired into West Orange Schools, they'll be the last in and the first out, and how that creates a safe space for students to be able to feel like a teacher will advocate for them? I had a lot of experiences of bias and racism within the classrooms at West Orange High Schools, and the only teachers who ever advocated for me were the black teachers, the one black teacher in many of the schools that I went to. I think that a lot of the times, black students feel misunderstood, and it's hard for them to communicate with teachers that don't look like them. So I'm trying to figure out how you guys are going to create a safe space for those students to feel like there's somebody actually there that cares for them and cares to advocate for them, and how you're going to encourage more teachers of color to come to your school when they know they'll be fired soon after. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we have Janice Johnson Diaz. If you can, please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hello, everyone. I don't know Mr. Dubose, but I do want to follow up on Nicole's point. And I want us to have a conversation that allows us to see what Rhonda Powell, I don't know who she is, but I really enjoyed her comments, is that the presence of black educators, black guidance counselors, et cetera, is not only good for black kids, but it's particularly good for white kids. And it's extremely important for white educators. So as we try to make sense of why the statement "Black Lives Matter" matters so much, it matters because we're in a majority white United States of America, and by and large, white folks and black folks and others have been under-informed about the importance of black people and black contribution to the existence and the thriving of American life. And so having a black counselor is both important for the black kids in terms of their sensibility, their sense of self, their possibilities, and their capability to succeed. But it's really important for the white kids because those white kids become many, many things, including police officers, mayors, superintendents of school, heads of school boards. And they need to understand black humanity. Because if they don't, they'll have a false sense of superiority, and they're likely to engage in actions that harm not only themselves, but others. And so black teachers and black counselors exist to help us get a better understanding of our capacity and our humanity. And so a school district that aims to have active, agentic, democratic students need to be quite thoughtful about representation, not just to assuage black kids and their parents, but if you really want successful white colleagues, if you want thoughtful white teachers, if you want high-performing white teachers, they need to have a diverse faculty around them. And so the guidance counselor who is being replaced or fired is nonsensical because it's going to harm black kids, for sure. But it's really going to harm white kids, too, and it's going to harm the white colleagues that he has. And so this is definitely something that demands reconsideration because if you think the benefit is only going to harm our community, you're wrong. It is going to harm you as well. Inequity harms everyone. Thank you.
Janice, I'm sorry, can we just have you state your name and address for the record?
It's Dr. Janice Johnson Diaz, 272 St. Cloud Avenue.
Thank you so much. And Debbie Rembert, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, Debbie Rembert, 11 Whitman Street. I'm speaking today about Mr. Dubose and what happens when you don't have a Mr. Dubose as a guidance counselor. My son suffered that. And not having representation or someone who understood him in elementary school led me to taking him out of the district because I was so afraid of what would happen to him in middle school and then in high school. Who would be his advocate? Who would he look up to? Who would he have to reference to and identify with? Representation counts. Representation makes a difference. I currently have a rising junior. And again, for her to have another guidance counselor, for her to reacclimate herself with another guidance counselor, for another guidance counselor to reacclimate themselves with her transcripts, her GPA, her goals, and what she wants to do is unfair, highly unfair and not thoughtful. You want to put children first? Think about what decisions you're making. Think about what decisions you're making. There's been a lot of talk. Now we're looking for the action. My son is no longer in the West Orange School District because of many biases, because of lack of role models. He wasn't able to continue going to school with his childhood friends and the friends that he played athletics with because of the things that I was afraid of with him. Again, the lack of representation, lack of understanding, reluctance on the part of the teachers to go an extra mile. We don't want this to happen to other students. There's a large consensus of African American males who have left the District of Orange, not because of the education, but what our concerns are for our young black males in the school district. Things must change. Listen to your parents. Listen to your students. Actions speak louder than words. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, do we have any other attendee in the audience who would like to speak? They can push the raise your hand button at the bottom of your screen. And for our call-in attendees, it is *9 to be put in the queue. And that seems to be it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Obviously, can't say much about personnel as much as I'd like to. I agree with a lot of what we're hearing. It's, you know, especially the case, you know, for the kids who are, you know, last name ours, who would be having their third guidance counselor. It's a terrible situation, and I, you know, I'm sympathetic. I think there was an excellent point that, you know, that, that black presence is important for all students, not just black students. I actually made it myself, I think, last meeting, speaking about Coach Grant. And I know there's a lot of things, not personnel-related, especially, there were some questions about opening fields and things like that that I can turn over to Dr. Cascone. I did, you know, it's a distinction without a difference, but I just want to address the use of the word termination. You know, obviously, if, it doesn't make a difference what you call it, but termination implies something bad, you know, done by the person losing their job. And this is a non-renewal. There is absolutely, you know, I just want to be careful that we don't accidentally start using a phrase that makes it seem as if somebody was let go for cause as opposed to non-renewed in a budgetary decision. I just think that's important. It would be unfortunate if that was put out the wrong way. There was a comment about not blaming unions. Absolutely the case, no one is blaming unions. The reality, you know, if there's anyone to blame for the way the tenure, tenure laws are set up and last in, first out, that would be the state. It's absolutely not the unions. It's nothing that we can negotiate away through the bargaining process. And I think that's all I have. Dr. Cascone.
I'm sorry, Dr. Cascone, you actually are muted. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Alper. And thank you to all our community members, parents, and students who, who attended tonight to speak and to provide your voice, you know, for mine and the board's consideration. I do have a number of items I wanted to just speak to that came up. You know, and some of them are very specific, but I wanted to honor those questions with some answers. So in terms of retiring staff member Ms. Cooper from Washington School, you know, we accept retirements over the course of the year. And I do believe that Ms. Cooper's retirement ostensibly was approved at a previous agenda and was discussed at a previous agenda. I don't recall specifically which agenda that was, but I would imagine if she's, if she has submitted her retirement, and it is not on this agenda, it was on a former agenda. And of course, we wish her well in her retirement. Ms. Berg, in terms of her role, that is, so Ms. Berg was covering for Washington School during a prolonged, a prolonged absence of Mr. Mayo earlier in the year. We kept Ms. Berg, you know, kind of on duty, if you will, to work with Mr. Mayo in her transition back into duty during the closures, then over the course of the closures, to assist her with some of those responsibilities. But as you can see from that motion, her term of service ended at the end of May, and Mr. Mayo will resume her role as the high school principal effective, you know, July 1. And we will actually have an assistant principal, Ms. Jackson, sharing there a couple of days to assist. Speaking about the opening of the fields, as you know, we, our, the schools have been closed under governor's order, and that goes through June 30. That includes outside facilities, which is why we have not opened them up prior to the governor's order. We would be out of compliance with the governor's order if we were to do that. Further, even our own outdoor graduation or gatherings of people outside are actually not authorized until after July 6. Of course, now that's been, the number of people who can gather has increased. And we, of course, have our own onsite graduation, which is scheduled for June 8. And we have many site preparations on the football field that need to be made for that. Even after that, and I sent an email this morning to some representatives in the, in the township of Washington who had reached out based upon a community member's inquiry that our intention is that following July 9, following the onsite graduation ceremony, our facilities will be open to the public again. However, there is a caveat there. If our scholastic athletics begin in some way, shape, or form on July 13, obviously during the hours of operation of the school district and when our scholastic athletes are practicing and training, we can absolutely not have intermingling with members of the public during those hours. Now, after hours, the, the track and the facilities would be open, but obviously, first priority would be given to our athletes for those practices. But that is the timeline around which we are following the opening, and it is aligned with the governor's orders as they relate to K through 12 public school systems. As far as the, the opening of school in September. So I spoke briefly to our preliminary plans for a hybrid approach. I should mention that we have still yet to receive specific guidelines from the state. So all of our exercises, our planning exercises at this point in time are largely conceptual, largely theoretical, until we get those finalized guidelines. We expect that we will have them within the next two weeks. What I did say was that if they were to follow the guidelines, which have been put forth recently by governor's order for higher ed, that it would require social distancing, which would mean that we could not be at 100% capacity in our buildings, which would mean we would have to have some sort of a staggered schedule. In terms of what we're doing to prepare for that, over the course of the last three months, we have been archiving a number of guidance documents that we're going to use for our planning. We've engaged in several focus groups. I participate in a weekly superintendent's roundtable in Essex County, as well as a number of webinars. We have people, a variety of people, training, you know, actively and on an ongoing basis participating in webinars. A meeting with my cabinet, senior-level cabinet tomorrow to map out our planning process for the summer, meeting with the full administrative team on Thursday, and then putting together a smaller think tank group, which is really going to start to thresh some of these out. As far as, in terms of details being provided to the community, as I mentioned in my correspondence, home to all parents and family members on Friday, you know, details will be released to parents on an ongoing basis and as soon as we have them. And as far as the opt-out, once we're provided you with your child's, you know, basically, the plan for their attendance in school, parents would then have the opportunity, if they chose to opt-out and have their child learn virtually for the school year. Again, as I mentioned in my opening comments, that would, you know, virtual is virtual. It's not in-person, but we can certainly make some qualitative enhancements to the way we've offered that to make it more engaging and more interactive. But at the end of the day, it's, you know, it's still through a computer as opposed to time onsite. I'm hopeful that when we're able to provide details to parents as to what that day-to-day school day looks like, that they'll be comfortable with the, the health and safety of their children and feel comfortable sending them to school. To talk a little bit about the referendum that was mentioned, I would just like to clarify that the, the previous referendum, which was constructed by the previous board, of which Mrs. Mordecai was a member, that was indeed over $50 million. We quickly realized after I came on board that that was an unrealistic sum to request of the local taxpayers. And so we immediately started thinking about how we could come up with a scaled-back referendum. One of the items that was in the budget for next year was an $80,000 expense to do the paperwork and, and rel- One of the items that was in the budget for next year was an $80,000 expense to do the, the paperwork and, and related and related assessments for the referendum. Which is now out of the budget and was cut most recently as a result of the $1.5 million that we lost in state aid. You know, through the more recent cut. As far as equity policies, um, I think it's a misrepresentation, representation to say we don't have equity policies. All school districts under code are required to have policies that speak to equity, including affirmative action. There are some districts that have taken that a step further and promulgated a policy that speaks more explicitly to what diversity means to that district. As it relates to their various policies and procedures. We are meeting for a public policy work session, um, on Wednesday night. And one of the things we will be discussing at that policy work session is looking at some of our existing policies, which are tangential to equity. And how we can make that more specific and explicit to speak to this district's, um, vision and belief system around equity. To speak to, you know, in general, the broad brushstrokes as it relates to kind of the financial situation. So in addition to the $1.5 million that we lost. I'm not convinced that we, that, that additional cuts may not be coming down the pike. And whether they are due to lost revenues through the local municipality, although the West Orange Township has been, has been excellent in terms of, of sticking with those payments. But even they don't know what they don't know as far as that goes. And it's not out of the realm of possibility that we could end up having to subsidize. As part of our payments to our own budget as opposed to payments from the township. Secondly, um, that estimate that gave the $1.5 million was the state's best estimate right now, though their fiscal year will end September 30th. And their final budget is not due until the end of August. That's their best guess of what they can give us, not really having a clear idea of what the ultimate loss of revenue is going to be. Because of lost sales tax, because of lost tolls, uh, because of additional expenses that they paid out to manage the COVID crisis. So we could very well, as we have seen, um, not often, but in previous years where we get an additional loss of two to $3 million in July. And so much of this conversation may be further academic at that point in time. The reality of it is, and you're right when we talk about priorities. The reality of it is, is that public schools are in an upside down model of funding. When we start our budget process, when we started the budget process this year, we were already in a position where we were looking how we could save six to $7 million in our budget. When we looked at, uh, proposed additions, which was a little over $3 million. And then we looked at what the increase in benefits were going to be. And what we looked at, what the estimated cost of salary increases would be. We were already at a deficit of between six and three quarter million dollars and over $7 million before we even started. And you're right. I mean, while our guidance counselor to student ratio is lower than what the American Association of School Counselors recommend. And quite frankly, it's sort of kind of crazy that they do recommend two 50 to one, that they're putting that up there as a standard. Let's be honest. Okay. I mean, we, we, we would be looking at, at ratios of 50. I mean, that would be truly, uh, revolutionary. But if we wanted to do that. And if we want to do many other things that we know are important, it's going to require us to prioritize as a district. Because we can't do it all. And I would argue that mental health and social emotional well being, there may arguably not be nothing more important than that. But, you know, anytime we, we talk about cutting programs and whether it's an athletic program. Or whether it's library media specialists, or last year it was reading specialists. Or we talk about scaling back on the number of languages we offer, or we no longer offer for advanced Cisco at the high school. We talk about scaling back programs. There's always a constituency, okay, that feels very strongly about that. And I've spoken to the board about this in closed session. I spoke about the board about this during our budget sessions. We are at a point in time where this community as a whole needs to decide what its priorities are because we can't perennially fund what we currently spend. And we certainly can't add and augment programs without significantly cutting others. And that's the reality for the, for us, and it's the reality for pretty much every school district. But let's talk a little bit about, cause I heard mention of, let's not do Chromebooks, let's not do capital improvements. So we don't do Chromebooks, that's, that's, we don't do Chromebooks until we start talking about the digital divide, right? And so if this district had not been, um, and we talk about the equity insofar as the digital divide. And so if this district had, had not been and has not been as proactive as it been about technology hardware. The thousand Chromebooks that we were able to, to distribute over the course of the closures would not have been there. And we would have had an even higher percentage of students who did not have access to computers at home. So having equity and technology access is very important. And those Chromebooks have a lifespan and they're constantly turning over. We talk about capital improvements, um, you know, so we talk about, um, you know, whether it's, you know, our maintenance budgets for the cleanliness of our buildings. Or we talk about ensuring that, um, we have, that we're making repairs to buildings so that our facilities are safe. And, and, and hygienic for, for, for students. So it, it's, it's very easy to Monday morning quarterback, um, that, you know, our priorities in the wrong place. But recognize that there are hundreds of priorities, you know, all of which, when you put them side by side, it's like, well, what's more important? Ensuring that we're able to remove asbestos floors and, and replace those or that. Oftentimes when you look at these things, it's very hard to make a decision and say one is more important than the other. I agree with, 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 you know, just about everything that I've heard from the standpoint of the importance of social emotional well being of students. I think that transition for kids who've had multiple guidance counselors is a definitely a tough road to hoe. But I would like to speak a little bit about the high school and I would like to speak a little bit about the leader of the high school, Mr. Moore. I'd like to speak to the fact that Mr. Moore was recognized by his student body as the student council administrator of the year. Um, I'd like to speak to, um, the, the fact that over the, the, over Mr. Moore's tenure. What we've seen in terms of the, the, the positive trajectory and culture and climate in that building. Whether it was, whether it's graduation rates, whether it's the decrease in fights, incidents of violence, uh, school violence and vandalism. And, uh, in terms of enrollment in, in AP courses. It's not to say we don't have, have areas to improve, but I think to turn to blind eye. To the trajectory that that school's been on, under the leadership of Mr. Moore, I do think on some level, um, is not painting, um, the whole picture. Diversifying staffs is, it's not just a West Orange. It's not just a West Orange priority and it's not just a West Orange challenge. Whether it's in the private sector or whether it's in the public, public sector. West Orange is not the only school district that is prioritizing it and also encountering challenges in quickly diversifying staff. I'm not going to speak to, um, I'm not going to speak to those challenges because I believe that all challenges can be overcome with the right game plan. I will say however, and that while I as the superintendent and the board here seated with me are here, we are the, we are the body now. We are the people responsible now, and so we hear you and we listen. But the dynamic, the, the situation that exists now is owned by not only every administrator that currently serves in the district right now. And I might add that 42% of our administrative team are people of color. But also every administrator and every board member and every board that served this district prior. This is not a situation that this board, that this board and myself as superintendent owns historically or longitudinally, though we do own it now in the present. So let me speak to a little bit about what has been done over the course of the last couple of years. A, a diversity job fair was held last year, and I believe the year before. It hasn't necessarily been held consistently and that needs to change. That needs to be a, one of a number of actions that's done perennially. We had a lot of success with that job, that diversity job fair last year. We had over 200 diverse candidates attend that job fair. And we ended up, out of the 52 hires of certificated staff, 26 or 50% of those hires were people of color. 10 African American, 10 Hispanic American, three of two or more races. And we had, I believe, two or three Asian, uh, hires from that, which is, I would argue, good progress. Unfortunately, our hiring outreach and our networking this year has been significantly hampered by the fact that we could not run a diversity job fair. And we've been doing our advertising and our interviewing, uh, virtually. That being said, we heard some great suggestions from Dr. Jones at our panel last week. I think when we talk about being proactive in our outreach to institutions of higher learning and in associations. Professional associations and student associations, we can do a lot more. We can go to the candidates and ensure that we are availing ourselves to a large number of diverse candidates. It's going to take time though. It's not, it's not something that's going to happen, um, that's going to happen overnight, but we can certainly demonstrate progress. And I would hope that my performance as a superintendent and the degree to which I subscribe to the philosophy of Black Lives Matter. And the degree to which I am committed to bridging the inequities in the school district will be judged by my performance over time. And not judged by a single decision, discrete point in time on one staff member. I sincerely hope that I. Have an opportunity to prove that commitment over time. You know, I think just, um, a, a final thing to note is that, you know, when we created this, we, we balanced this budget. You know, that there were 30, 30 positions that were cut from this budget. This position about which we've, we've been speaking tonight is one of 30 positions. And, you know, there were, you know, other staff members in that cohort of 30 students who meant a lot to their students. They meant a lot to us, to a district. They served this district well. They served this, this district in a distinguished manner. And, um, and they're, and, and they have unfortunately not been able to be renewed. So, you know, I, all I can, I can say, um, in closing. Is that, um, you've certainly given me, you've given the board a, a lot to think about. The financial certainty of the next couple of months is, is not certain at all. We have no idea what other additional losses we may incur in the next two, three months. But certainly you've spoken as the public, we have an obligation now as a superintendent, as a board to. Says what's been told, what's been told to us and said to us, um, and, uh, make a decision one way or the other. So again, I thank you, um, for your time and I appreciate your feedback. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Cascone. Board member reports, Mr. Rothstein.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. Boy, it's late, so I will try to speak even less than I normally do. Uh, one quick congratulations and a couple of thank yous. Congratulations, of course, to our students, um, to the graduating senior class of 2020, um, and to all of our students. This has not been an easy year. You've weathered it and we're proud of you and we look forward to seeing what we can all accomplish together next year. And for our seniors, looking forward to hearing what you've accomplished, uh, in your years moving forward. Thank you to our faculty and staff, uh, your dedication to your students is noticed and appreciated. We are grateful to you. Thank you to our administration. Again, not, not an easy year at all, um, but I have not personally heard a single complaint from any one of you. The attitude has simply been, let's roll up our sleeves and get to work and figure this out. And, uh, we've got a long road ahead of us still, and I'm confident that you're going to continue to lead us successfully. So thank you to you. Earlier this week, the, uh, oh, I'm sorry, uh, last week, uh, there was the panel discussion on diversity, equity and access. What an outstanding discussion. If you did not have an opportunity to see that, please, uh, look at, look for it on the, uh, school board Facebook page or the school district Facebook page. Such an outstanding discussion and well worth it. Pointed really a bright light on the path forward. It's so relevant to everything that was discussed tonight. And, uh, again, it's one of those situations where we just need to roll up our sleeves and get to work. Um, and finally, a thank you to, um, the members of the community who participated tonight and spoke up. These are very difficult decisions and your voices, your opinions really do matter. And they're very important as we participate in our deliberations about the best path forward. So thanks to you all.
Thank you, Ministry of Scouts.
Good evening, everyone. I see we've lost a few people, but I, I see that we have 50 participants left. And, uh, as, um, Mr. Rothstein said, for those of you who have shared your, your hearts and your opinions. It's much appreciated. This isn't easy. If we knew that we had the funding available, that would certainly sway our opinion at this point in time. But we just don't know. But I heard you, I feel you and, um, appreciate you. Just wanted to congratulate Dr. Cascone. I think his, his actual anniversary is July 15th. He's been with us for a year and I can't tell you how happy I am that he had his hands on the helm. As we, uh, went through these very, very rough waters. I think he's had an unforgettable year. And we thank him for his astute leadership. I had occasion the other night to watch the live broadcast of West Orange Now. And I want to thank Perry Bashkov for hosting this event, which he entitled Future Black Leaders in West Orange. And his guests included Mark Yonker, Charles Aburasade, Javon Mason, Jordan Scott Young, Anya Dillett. Salam Waldi and Kaia Baker. So after leaving the event, um, I felt so optimistic, so enlightened and proud to have such bright, mature. Intuitive, thoughtful, young people standing up and out for social justice. And then I got real sad and, and I had to stop and wonder, why was I so sad? I was sad because I saw myself in them when I was their age. And the older you get, the more you talk about how old you are. So I can say that 52 years ago, I, I was that freshman in college. Who took over the, the president's office because we wanted a black student union. We wanted some black professors. We wanted a, a, a black. Black studies program. And so when I thought about it, I said, oh my goodness, here we are. These young people are asking for the same things that I asked for 52 years ago. And so that was the source of my sadness. And it just is very upsetting. Someone mentioned Mr. Scales, that of course was my Mr. Scales, who was the first black principal in West Orange. And he got that job because the Concerned Black Citizens, a group of African Americans. Citizens, residents in the eighties. Petitioned the township, the Board of Ed to hire someone that their kids could look up to. And here we are, all these years later, asking for the same thing. So yes, we've made progress, but it's very, very disheartening. But here's some good news. I just learned through the New Jersey Department of Education that one of our own teachers, uh, Ms. Sharon Ortiz. Was one of only eight in the state to be asked to participate on a focus group in May entitled continuity of learning. A continuity of learning conversation and panelists shared their successful teaching practices during e-learning. And contributed ideas for safety, returning to school and what our high schools might look like post COVID-19. So congratulations to, uh, Ms. Ortiz for being a standout and representing West Orange well. Yesterday on Father's Day, I zoomed in on a conversation about the Amistad legislation. Which we know was enacted in 2002. And the conversation was also about social justice and it was sponsored by Mr. Larry Hamm. Of the People's Organization for Progress and he happened to have been the featured guest speaker at our Black History Month celebration at the high school back in February. The other panelists included the, um, executive director of the Amistad Commission, as well as Principal Kafele. Who is well known for his work with African American studies in the public schools. And he's been doing this work, uh, since the nineties. And I would like to see us contact him as we continue our work. We have some excellent resources here in town. But I don't think that we can overplan as we move forward. And his advice was that. As we look at Amistad back in 2002, the intent at that point was to infuse African American history into social studies. He says, we've gone way beyond that now. It's about infusing African American history and cultural responsiveness into all of the subject areas. And so as we move forward, directing and implementing and revising our curriculum, we should really keep that in mind. So congratulations to all of our students who have lived through a year that will make history. So when people say, where were you in 2020, you will have quite a story to tell. A special note of best wishes to those students who moved up from kindergarten, our fifth graders to sixth or eighth graders to ninth. And I wish all the best to our graduating seniors as you prepare to step out from public education and into your next phase. And wonderful, wonderful, um, best wishes to Anika Fernandez, our valedictorian, and Brett Zelman, our salutatorian. And a special shout out to Darlene Follas. You've been a light. You've been a light at our board meetings and a beacon for social justice. Your insights have left me in awe. And we will miss you immensely. And I'm not a crier, but. Something's coming over me, I guess, because it's past my bedtime. And finally, kudos to our teachers, our supervisors and our building administrators. If someone had told you on February fifteenth that a month from then. You were going to experience school closures and that all instruction would take place online. You would have said, that can't be done. That is absolutely impossible. Well, you did it and you did it well. And so now exhale before you take that next deep breath as we move forward. So thank you very much for your professionalism and for taking care of all of our kids whom we all love. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Merklinger.
In the interest of time and seeing that it's eleven fifteen, I'll keep my comments short. So I definitely want to thank all our staff. Our administration, Dr. Kasko. It's been an incredible year. I want to thank everyone for their thinking outside of the box or creativity and bringing their talents to our school districts. I want to congratulate our students, our fifth grader, sixth grades, eighth grades, and of course, Western High School students as you graduate. And move into the world in new endeavors. I want to, you know, recognize, you know, it was really great to see all the community activity going on this the past couple of weeks and definitely the forum. That Dr. Kasko held, I have to say, was definitely eye opening. Something that struck me was what Mr. Viney had said about professional development, not being in the education world and being in corporate America. You know, I have a different lens on what goes on. So I've always heard professional development, professional development. And to hear his perspective about it was was definitely an interesting take. So I appreciate everyone coming to the table and bringing their thoughts and and their expertise. For us to hear as well as our students in Perry's West Orange Live Now. It was definitely great to see so many different thoughts and ways of thinking that, you know, not all of us necessarily always. Have that lens to to see. So we appreciate that. I want to recognize Natalie Nevins. I know we had, we recognized a few students. But Natalie was actually recognized of three hundred and fifty four school districts in the state for the by the NJSIAA as a graduating. Senior for her athletic abilities. So I just want to congratulate her and wish her best of luck as she goes into college. And again, to Sandra Guerrero for being the trailblazer and, you know, really leading the way for women in sports, especially with wrestling. I want to, you know, give a shout out to our baseball, West Orange High Baseball Team. Who, from what I understand, is going to be participating in the Last Dance Tournament. That they're offering as a way to make up for the seniors not having a senior year of baseball. And that's something that's being participated in across the state. So good luck to them. And I look forward to seeing everyone back on the fields as soon as they open. And just, you know, and lastly, just to say, congratulations to everyone on a fantastic school year. I think as a board, we've done a lot to move forward and I look forward to our next steps over the course of this year or over the summer. And just a reminder to all our seniors, wherever you go, you will always know in your heart that West Orange is always here for you. So just keep that in mind as you go on to the world. There's no place like home and West Orange is definitely your home. So best of luck and we will see you soon.
Thank you, Ms. Tunncliff.
Thank you. I'll keep it short. Congratulations to all of our graduates, all of our students who have been promoted to the next level of their education. We're excited to, for the energy that you bring to our district and to see what you're going to be able to do. Just want to thank Darlene for being a wonderful representative of the student body and for sharing her thoughts with us on. The board and we wish you much, much luck in university. They're going to be glad to have you there. And I also wanted to just remind everybody that we do have a policy workshop this coming Wednesday, June twenty fourth. At five thirty PM. Is that right, Ken? Yes, okay. And this is how we really move our district forward and help make sure that we have guiding documents. So that our administration and our superintendent can ensure that we're in a good space. So. You can get to peek behind the curtain and come see our workshop. And then I'm also looking forward to. Having a greater discussion with my board colleagues. Hopefully, we're going to have a board retreat over the summer and really delve into what diversity means. To this district. I thank all of you who spoke up tonight, and I think it is a question we really have to look at and discuss honestly. And prioritize and how we're going to prioritize that going forward in the next several years. So we thank you all for speaking up tonight and I wish you all a good night. Thanks.
All right. Yeah, I want to thank everyone for their comments as well. They they really do matter. And I want to thank Darlene as well again for everything she's done this year. Board member report, I will keep it very brief. Was lucky enough to go with Dr. Kasko into Mount Pleasant's fifth grade diploma handout. You know, they did the version where the cars drive to the school and it was very nice to see everybody come in in their decorated cars. There were some kids in caps and gowns, little ones. It was it was very cute. Glad they were able to make that happen. And then I was able to attend Gregory's, which did it the other way around, where they had about thirteen, fourteen cars with. The principal and teachers and other staff members driving around to each of the, I think, eighty nine graduates homes. Which was really quite a feat. You know, you would get there and, you know, you would start beeping the horns and, you know, you would see the people off in the distance waving at you. And, you know, the kids were really excited. That was pretty special. I want to thank Mrs. Z, Paula Healy and Amy Haynes for all the setup work they did for that. And also Danny Carroll from the West Orange Police Department who drove along with us. And as we would get to an intersection, he would kind of zoom out and block traffic so that everybody could get out at once safely. You know, with thirteen cars, otherwise it would have been quite the feat. Congratulations to all of our students, all of our graduates, whether it's eighth grade, senior year, fifth grade, kindergarten. And thank you, serious thank you to all of our teachers, our administrators and staff for everything they've done this year to make this a success. That's all I've got. Our next regular meeting is July ninth, virtually at six thirty PM. As Ms. Tunncliff mentioned, our next time we'll be together is a policy workshop this Wednesday. That is five thirty, also right here on the internets. And we'll see you at graduation tomorrow. Have a good night.
Bye.
We're adjourned.